Wonderful. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 5th special meeting of the Ojai City Council. Mr. Montgomery, roll call please.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mayne.
Here.
Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Of course, Mayor. Welcome, community. Honorable council, please rise as you are able. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay. Then we will move on to our discussion. So in our standard form with this special meeting, we will first have our presentation and then go to the public comments, I'm presuming. Ms. Anderson, does that sound good or Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Okay. Well, great. I turn it over to you, Mr. Harvey.
Okay, great. We're actually, I'm gonna hand this over to Ms. McAluso and Mr. Wells. So Maura, would you like to tee things up for us, please?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to introduce myself, Maura McAluso. I'm the principal planner here at the city of Ojai. And we have Walker Wells across the way here with Ramey and Associates. And we also have Myra Vega online, and she is with TRC Companies. And after my presentation, and after public comments, I'll be handing this over to those consultants. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about, well, I already did tell you about myself and about these people. And we're here to talk about the energy efficiency approach that is on the agenda this evening. We've invited the public and construction professionals to this community meeting/ workshop regarding the proposed Single Family Flex Path Energy Efficiency Approach. This is an educational opportunity, and just as importantly, it's an opportunity to answer and respond, to listen to and respond to questions that you may have, as well as the council. Your questions and our responses are gonna be included in the landing page that's already up online. The landing page is on the city's website. It's a very long name. And so instead of telling it to you right now, I want you to know that I did put little pieces of paper at the back table that have the...
It's not that long.
Well, okay. Let's hear it. I'm gonna say it then.
Single, it's all hyphen. Oh, go ahead. You say it.
But if somebody were to write it, they're like, "Write now." So anyway, if there are no more little pieces of paper at the back, you can always contact Community Development, and we can guide you to that.
We'll also promote it. We'll put it out on social media. It'll be linked from the front page of the city website. So we'll make it as easy to find as we possibly can.
Excellent. Today's presentation materials and the agenda reports and other Flex Path Energy Efficiency materials and upcoming meetings are all gonna be provided on this landing page. This workshop is not meant to provide a decision on this proposed process this evening. It's to, again, gather your questions and respond to them this evening, and also perhaps on the landing page at another time or following the meeting. And the next step moving forward will be a public, or in a public hearing realm, is a city council meeting on August 12th. And that'll be a further discussion on the Flex Path and also to consider a draft ordinance. And so with that, I'd like to hand it over... Oh, I'm sorry. Are we doing public comments first?
Well, I wanna hand it to the mayor. I know that the mayor and Mr. Wells discussed an approach for the presentation. So Mayor, do you want to trot that out?
I think my thought would be that we hear the presentation as it goes on, take questions from staff, and then once there's something to respond to, possibly public comments at that point. Does that seem reasonable? Okay. Does that seem reasonable to my colleagues?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's proceed. So just to reaffirm, if one of us has a question for you, you're okay with us interrupting and asking a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little more information on this energy efficiency proposed ordinance. And again, this is set up to be a sort of workshop format, part of public engagement. So it's a little more flexible maybe in format than a conventional city council meeting. And that's the intent. So what I wanna present tonight is just a little background on the development of this ordinance, kind of where we've been, some of the main building blocks that go into putting it together, how we sort of arrived at the square feet triggers, where the points come from, where the measures come from, the relationship with the state in the cost-effectiveness programs, how we're not getting into exempted appliances at the federal level, and we're responding to things that happened with Berkeley with the gas ban, all to put something together that hopefully is straightforward to implement and meets all of these other checks and balances. So with that, I'm gonna jump into it. Some of these slides you will have seen before, but we have some more chance to talk about them. Last time I presented, I think it was 11 o'clock at night. Okay, so here we are. Gotta get dialed in with the mic. So purpose, give stakeholders and the community a chance to learn about and provide feedback on this ordinance that's being proposed. We have been at this for a while, and even not on this slide are things like the climate emergency ordinance that was adopted. And you know, there's a whole history to the left of other things, bans on lawn mowers and weed whackers and these types of things. So Ojai has been involved in the sort of sustainability dialogue and sort of climate action dialogue for a while. This particular effort, you could say, started with the council entering into this agreement with Clean Power Alliance, your electricity provider, to have the group that I work for, Ramey Associates, who are a subconsultant to the main contractor, TRC Companies, and that's who Myra is with. So entered into this agreement for us to help you, and that's what we've been trying to do. And then it was last August that we were here and did a sort of roundtable discussion with some people involved in the business community and the building community. We had this information session in October, back in December. In January, there was the session where it was sort of intimated to be potentially a first reading, at which point we stopped because the council was involved in this priority-setting effort. And then now it's sort of been resurrected, and here we are tonight, which I'm very excited about. So what is this Flex Path approach? Well, it's supposed to refer to... Am I doing this wrong? I keep cutting in and out.
It's actually better.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's great.
It's better. All right. Usually you wanna get right up on the mic. Okay. So here's this flexible pathway approach. And step one is it builds on or leverages your involvement, participation with Clean Power Alliance. So you know, you have clean electricity, which means you would like to, at least in concept, power as many things as possible with clean electricity. There's also a baseline understanding that you don't wanna waste any kind of energy because it's all a resource that has to come from somewhere. So you want to include energy efficiency and then encouragements to electrify in the ordinance. And that's what this Flex Path does. It gives you different choices that you'll see in a little bit to choose your pathway to compliance. It does respond to the Berkeley ruling on the gas ban. So we basically said, "Well, we can't just ban gas. We have to instead encourage people to do things that are related to efficiency, or hopefully they choose to do things related to electrification." It also meets this federal EPC, Energy Policy and Conservation Act, that says only the feds can regulate certain appliances, like hot water heaters and like HVAC systems. So we can't create a local ordinance that would ask for a higher level of efficiency or preclude the use of those appliances. That's the federal government's job. And then the state has requirements around cost effectiveness. You see that on the second kind of indented bullet. And the state runs this program where all three of the investor-owned utilities for support this statewide cost-effectiveness study for every single climate zone in the state. And that's what this ordinance is based on, is that state-level analysis. And then, can see it in a minute too, but it basically determines how many British thermal units, BTUs, annually could be saved by adopting different measures, like upgrading your windows, adding insulation. And there's a list of items, and it's the same list for every climate zone, and they go through their cost-effectiveness analysis and say these things are cost-effective and these things aren't. Your local ordinance needs to have a pathway that only pulls from the cost-effective measures. You can add other things that people can choose, but there has to be a cost-effective pathway. Multiple pathways. We've talked about some of the administration in the past and how it's relatively straightforward to fold in compliance with the ordinance with your existing plan check and plan review process. Basically, a checklist where someone could say, I don't know, like 15 items. You just say, "These are the ones I'm doing, and I get enough points, and I'm done. That's in the plans," and then it would go to the plan checker. And then you can see that, you know, a number of other jurisdictions have adopted this approach. So you're a leader, but you're not first, which is kind of a good spot to be. Why are we here today? Well, there is some urgency. And there was AB 306 that was causing a lot of consternation for many of us. It got turned into AB 130. But this was all of an effort to restrict local governments from adopting local codes up until, I don't know, sometime in the future. I think three years in the future. There are some provisions in what actually got adopted by the legislature as part of the budget bill. So this thing kind of got accelerated, I guess, in how it got moved through the legislature. So it says, "If you have adopted a code before September 30th, you can keep it." And so this is why we are here tonight to do more outreach, and then scheduled for next week for a first reading, and hopefully able to do the second reading if whatever, if it does go forward next week. So it's approved and adopted before the 30th of September. There's some other exemptions. You know, if your general plans speaks about environment or climate, or if you have a climate action plan, both of those things are in the works, you know, by the firm that I work for, but they're not done. So we felt like we couldn't use those other exemptions, and it would behoove us, if we're taking, if this is something you wanna do, to get these key steps completed before the 30th of September. It doesn't have to go into effect immediately on the 1st of October. It just needs to be adopted. We can give a bit of a pause to educate contractors and building owners about what's entailed and how it works. And then if all this goes as planned, it could go into effect on the 1st of January, along with all the other building code updates. We just happen to be in the triennial building code update cycle. So these can be local code amendments that just folded in, which I think is preferred because then the community gets all the new code at once rather than getting it piecemeal. All right.
If I may, that is actually what's being proposed, and I believe the date is closer to January 31st for implementation.
Oh, is it?
To allow for staff and your team to educate the community and the space for everybody to get up to speed.
Okay.
Just to point out, there's also a typo that is known already. But on page five of six in the staff report of this item, you look at the bottom of the page under "Next Steps Timing." It's already noted. I'm just highlighting. "If adopted at the August 26 council meeting, the ordinance would take effect on September 26, 2025. However, the ordinance would apply to applications submitted to the city on or after January 31st." It should say 2026.
Okay.
Not 2025.
All right.
We were gonna time travel.
I know. We're working on it. Thanks.
It's like, that's why you're gonna time travel?
I know, right?
I would.
Isn't there better reasons?
Yes. Okay. So that's why some of this urgency. So what are the benefits? So these are the benefits to homeowners in the community. And you know, obviously, this is tied into your environmental goals and your climate goals and that sort of citywide action. And then there's sort of regional and global benefits to all of this. But you know, we also need to think about the people who are doing these projects, the homeowners, and you know, what they get out of this. So they will save energy, and that should reduce their bill. There's some issues, just to be transparent about everything, that moving from gas to electricity sometimes can result in higher utility costs. It depends on the cost of gas, and gas fluctuates quite a bit. So you may come out cost-neutral, which is typically what the analysis shows. But you will be saving energy, and ideally, and most likely, you will be saving on your bill. A number of these measures, like adding insulation, do improve comfort. So it means you will have a less leaky house, a better insulated house. It should stay cooler or warmer, depending on what you're after in the time of year. Removing gas appliances, which are known to leak to some extent, and releasing methane into the home, which can be an asthma trigger, is benefit for public health. Combusting natural gas produces particulate matter. It also produces carbon monoxide. Those can also be asthma triggers. So it's good to get the combustion of natural gas out of the building. So this is a benefit of electrification. You can see things are safer because we don't have things that are literally on fire in your house. And then there are some connections that we've been drawing, kind of based on what we heard back in January about seeing, you know, where there is a nexus to fire hardening with some of these measures. So you know, higher-performing windows, like a double-pane window, is more fire-resistant than a single-pane window. And so that's just one example of sort of a mutual benefit across these two ideas. And then kind of thinking of the big picture, improved outdoor air quality. So you are in an airbase, and that is in non-attainment for oxides of nitrogen, NOx, people will call it. And when you combust methane or combust anything, there's a chemical reaction with the atmosphere. Remember, most of our air is in oxygen. It's nitrogen. And so it'll produce oxides of nitrogen, which is a respiratory irritant and also an asthma trigger. So you're kind of helping in a modest way with regional air quality. And this is why a number of the air quality management districts have also looked at, you know, regulating or restricting the sale of gas-fired appliances. It was in the Bay Area and then South Coast Air Quality Management District. They're looking at electrification from a pure air quality and health standpoint, not a climate standpoint, but the health benefit is there. Okay, so we're gonna kind of jump to the conclusion and then maybe go backwards and fill in some of the rationale behind these things. This is effectively the meat of the ordinance. Who is covered? What size of projects are covered? And then what is the list of things that people can choose from? And Myra and the folks at TRC looked at some of your permit data and were able to see some coalescence around sort of modest-sized projects being around 300 square feet, and then some larger projects at around 1,000 square feet. So this is how we created those thresholds, looking at the Ojai-specific permit data. And then you can see the list here in the point. So you know, these are the measures. Since we're doing this very deliberately, I'll just go through them. So the water heating packet is insulating the pipes that go to and from the water heater. And if it doesn't have it, they call it a jacket, but it's like a sort of a blanket. They call it a blanket as well, that goes around the water heater that just adds insulation to it. So that's what that one is. You put this blanket around the water heater. You insulate the pipes. That would save you, that would get you one point. And then this little box over here on the left, it says, "One point equals 1 million BTUs saved per year." So there is the logic to the points. So it's not like somebody said, "Feels like a one, feels like a seven." The state, again, in their cost-effectiveness studies, have gone through and said, "In this climate zone, this measure will result in this many BTUs of savings, and that equals one point in this case." Switching to an induction cooktop has other benefits, not, you know, getting rid of combustion, has a relatively minor efficiency benefit, but there's some in there. They are slightly more efficient than electric resistance or gas, just in how they generate heat with magnets, basically. Heat pump clothes dryer is just a clothes dryer that uses heat pump electric technology instead of combusting gas or electric resistance. Air sealing is just going around with a caulk gun and sealing up all the leaks. Duck sealing is checking to see if, you know, a lot of times that gray goop is called mastik that goes on the ducts. It can get old. It can crack, or sometimes there's still ducts that were put together with duct tape. And so those just need to be sealed. And then adding attic insulation, R19. R stands for resistance, and a bigger number means more insulation. So that amount of insulation would be unusual to have in a conventional attic. You might have R32 or something. Upgrading your windows, likely to double pane, also with low-y glass and solar reflectance on it. So just a better window. Adding insulation into the wall. You can see the R, again, the resistance, R13. And you see the points go up. Putting in new ducts and sealing or plus sealing what's there worth six points. Then we go down the insulating in the floor, if you have a crawl space, with R19 or R30. Heat pump hot water heater. It's electric. And then we get into adding on solar photovoltaic and then pre-wiring things for electric. Heat pump space heater, which is your HVC. And finally, these three mandatory measures as they apply. So if you're in the utility room, the kitchen, or laundry, we want you to pre-wire for the electric appliances, which is basically putting in the sort of capacity for 220 when you eventually upgrade your appliances. So it's saying you can keep what you have, but if you're gonna open up the walls and do work, we want you to put in the infrastructure, basically, for your future electric appliance. And then to leave space in the electrical panel for that future 220, and also to leave space in the electric panel for a future electric vehicle. So that's the list. I talked about the 300 square feet and the 1,000 square feet. If you have a 300-square-foot building, you would need to get eight points. And if you have a 1,000-square-foot or larger project, you would need 19 points. And these next slides just give an example of what the kind of things you would need to do. And then there's some more examples of what this might look like.
Can I stop here for one second?
Yes.
Ms. McAluso, I wanna check a couple of things. In the past, at least earlier in the year, on the 300 square feet or less, were we talking about at most one project a month at most? Is that your rough estimate?
Yes, that's a rough estimate of the projects.
So one project at most, and then of 1,000 square feet, Mr. Seibert said something like, "A handful at most." And it does not apply to businesses?
That's correct. Single-family houses only.
Right. Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Then I forgot to mention something. You see the asterisks to the left of air sealing, duct sealing? These are all measures that have some correlation to fire hardening. So if there's more insulation, there's more resistance to the fire moving through the wall. I talked about the better windows. Also, if there's gaps in the ducts, it's also a pathway that fire could come into the home. Yes.
Yeah, just following up on what it addresses. It also, I understand, only applies to existing construction that is being modified.
Yes.
So a new construction is gonna have its own set of...
It would, yes. Yeah. And some of the thinking is that the energy code that will go into effect on the 1st of January, the building code, is pretty stringent. And so it might be enough for new single-family. And the real opportunity, if we're connecting this back to climate action, is with your existing building stock. So I didn't say this before, but you know, most of your emissions are gonna come from transportation, which you don't regulate. Like you can't pass an ordinance that says, "Everybody has to buy an electric car and charge it with clean energy." You know, you can put in charging stations and facilitate it, but you can't regulate the purchase of private vehicles. But you do have regulatory authority over, you know, the built environment in your city. And sort of the place that's leaking the most energy or inversely has the most opportunity for benefit is the existing building stock. And that's exactly what we're looking at. Yes.
I have another question, too. And so the modifications that we're talking about to earn these points, these could be done anywhere in the home or not just in the area that's being renovated? Is that correct?
So my understanding is they would need to be done sort of everywhere in the home.
Great, okay.
Yes. So like you wouldn't just put a little piece of better insulation over your kitchen. If you redid your kitchen, it would need to be the attic.
Great, thank you. That's what I meant.
But for clarification, you're gonna get to this slide, but the modification can't be more than 20% of the value of the addition?
Right. If it gets too expensive, then they would be exempt. Yes.
So just to follow up, if you were gonna do floor insulation, you would have to do your entire home in floor. The entire home would have to be insulated, which means you'd have to pull up your entire floor.
My understanding is this would be in the crawl space. You would go under the house, and you're stapling the insulation from underneath.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So you wouldn't have to tear up your floor. Okay, so then here's just a couple of examples, and like I said, there's other examples. So this would say for a 300-square-foot project, and this is only looking at things that have been deemed cost-effective. You could do duck sealing and add insulation to your attic, and you would get eight points, and you would be done. Or you could do duck sealing and do wall insulation, and you would be done. Or you could jump down to the 17-point item, which is to put up a solar photovoltaic system, and then with the pre-wiring to the panel. And that's, those are examples of choices that, to me, you know, make sense, things people might actually do and that kind of go together.
I'm gonna, so maybe the floor was a bad example, but if you were gonna do wall insulation, for instance, that's a different story.
That is a different story. Yeah.
Let's see, wall insulation is three points, but you would have to...
You have to blow in insulation probably to all the walls in your house.
Okay, thank you.
That's not obvious. This is, I've read it many times. That was not clear to me, but I'm glad we're talking about that now.
Yeah. I asked this question a couple of days ago. I'm like, "Would this apply to just the area of work or the whole building?" And they said, "Well, this Energy Commission is assuming that it's an upgrade to the whole structure." And so, you know, the energy code went into effect in 1978 or 1979, I think. And so houses built before that might not have any insulation in the wall.
Because some of the issues, like a heat pump, clothes dryer, you would only have one. Those are easy. And but so for example, if you said, let's say you're gonna build another room, and you decide, "In the room, I'm gonna put the double-pane glass." Then the owner would have to put double-pane glass throughout the house?
Yes, which is why there's other ways to do it. So you could do the duck sealing and the attic sealing, or you could choose items that aren't considered to be cost-effective by the state. And you know, again, cost-effectiveness is that the incremental cost of the item gets paid back during its assumed life cycle. So you could just jump down to the heat pump water heater or the heat pump HVC system, and you would get all of your points in one fell swoop.
Must it be this way?
In which way?
I'm just asking you this question. So let's say if somebody were to say, "I'm building a guest bedroom, and I wanna do these things." Must it be that they have to have windows replaced throughout the home, or could they just do it in the guest room?
My understanding, this is maybe where I'd like to call a friend, but Myra has... I've asked her this question and been told it's the whole building, which is again why we like this system, because it gives you choices.
I believe you mean Myra. I know. We have a Myra.
I meant Myra.
But if there's a cap at the percentage of money, and let's say you have 10 windows, and you meet that cap with five windows, would replacing those five still count as the credit? Or would you have to do, if the cap is the dollar amount?
How I think it would work is someone might say, "Well, if these windows are so expensive, maybe you might look at some other options that could get you your eight points that are less costly or better aligned with your project."
So tell me if I'm understanding, if you said, "Oh, I'm ready to do the double-pane glass, but 20% of the value of the guest bedroom means I could do half the house, not the entire house. Would that suffice?"
If cost were an issue. I mean, obviously, the ideal would be if cost wasn't an issue, you'd have all that, the great benefits of the fire hardening, but you have the benefits of the double-pane windows. But if you are looking for ways to get points and you're on a tight budget, then, I mean, one of the things I like about this is that it is flexible, that you can look at what, you have a choice. But I'm wondering if, instead of looking at the house as the cap, like you have to do all or nothing, if the dollar amount would suffice? For someone who's on a tighter budget.
Yeah.
So I think that's...
Can you all hear me now? Yes.
I was having some audio issues. There were... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I might have missed the last couple of comments. I was figuring out the audio issues. But this question about the windows. You'll notice on the slide that for a target score of eight, we didn't select windows because it's unlikely someone with that small of a renovation is going to choose that measure. It is a very expensive measure. It is cost-effective, but it is very expensive. It's likely for that higher threshold that we're gonna talk about here soon, where they're replacing at least 1,000 square feet of their home, where they might consider that measure. It's more likely they're gonna take some of these smaller efficiency upgrades or choose to electrify one of their appliances, either a heat pump space heater or, I'm sorry, a heat pump water heater, which would meet all the points, or a heat pump space heater in one of the one-point measures. And so in terms of, I think, Councilmember Lang... And so in terms of, I think, Councilmember Lang, you were suggesting having the trigger be on a dollar value instead of a square foot. Triggers, is that what you were suggesting?
Yes, I was, yes, I was, I was wondering if the, if in instances where you do have a budget, if, if doing the entire house isn't feasible, then could, could you meet that cap of the percentage of the overall reno? And, and have that count for the points?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be the trigger, Myra. It would, would more be a, you'd say it's a fifty thousand dollar project. And so if the upgrades are more than ten thousand dollars, I'd, I need, I can stop doing them. You know, and.
Yeah. So there's, we do have an exception as part of that twenty thousand, twenty percent cost threshold. You would just need to achieve whatever points get you to that twenty percent. Does that answer the?
So if I can follow up on that, I, another way to look at the question that was asked is if there's a, you know, kind of a presumption that you're going to do the entire house, because that's what the default for the rules is, but you've already met your financial cap. You get to stop at say five windows instead of doing all ten.
And if it's also helpful.
Yeah.
That's what I thought she was proposing.
Okay, okay.
If you've done other measures in the past, you can get credit for those retroactively when you go to do these types of amendments also.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and to, to Councilmember, Councilmember Lang's proposal, I, I don't think if that detail would work for the CEC, I don't think, I don't know if that would get through CEC approval. Because in order to get the points, you kind of have to follow the methodology that, the assumptions that were in the cost effectiveness study, which again, those savings represent whole home savings. But we do have a, you know, a variety of, of exceptions, which Taylor brought up another one that are, are meant to kind of, because we can't predict every situation, but this, the, the list of exceptions should be able to cover a variety of scenarios where it is financially infestable to meet the target score or technically infestable to meet the target score. And then also granting, as, as Taylor mentioned, granting people credit for doing some of these efficiency measures voluntarily before this ordinance took effect. And I just wanted to point out for the, we talked about the wall insulation as an example. These points are based off vintage of pre nineteen seventy-eight. And so looking at Ojai's building stock, that represents a, a, a good portion, the bulk of Ojai's building stock. So that, just to put down perspective, that a lot of these homes might not already have these existing measures, which is where these energy savings, energy saving benefits come from as well.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I wasn't proposing that we have that cap. I was just asking for clarification.
Why are we here to?
Yeah, thank you.
So there's a, there's a couple. So let's hold this sort of as a conceptual issue and then we have a few more examples of real projects and then maybe that'll say, okay, in practice, what would likely happen? All right. How do we go back to the slides?
Christian, could we please put the PowerPoint back up?
Thank you.
All right. So this was an eight point option. And as you can see, Councilmember Lang, we didn't put in windows because I, I mean, yeah, I thought, well, that's expensive. So there, there have to be sort of reasonable pathways through this, so it's fair. Okay, so this is the larger project. A thousand square feet or over. And then the target score here that's being, you know, recommended is, is nineteen. And so you can see that those four boxes kind of towards the top could go together. And these are again, all items considered cost effective by the state. So insulating the attic, changing out your windows, adding insulation to your wall and putting in new ducts or sealing the ducts that are there already. So it's, you know, it's a pretty big project on energy, but it's also a pretty big project in general. Or you could put up solar and then pick one of the above or a couple of the one point options. And, you know, and I don't know the average of, well, you have some very large homes, but then you have some not super large homes. But I mean, a thousand square feet could be like a quarter to half of a house, depending on, on, you know, where it is. So I think it's of a scale that this level of investment in energy isn't disproportionate to the size of the project. Okay, and then I talked about this already, but just these two rules, things have to be cost effective and it, and we have to have a pathway that does not require electrification. And so we showed that on those previous slides. Again, people can choose the electric appliances. You can see they're worth a lot of points, but we can't make people have to do that. And then these target scores were, were selected. It's a little tiny on here, but it, this basically goes back to the cost effectiveness studies and each point is worth a million BTU saved. And so this is sort of pulled out of the cost effectiveness study for climate zone nine, which is the climate zone that the vast, vast majority of Ojai is located within. I think the point here is if you added up all of the possible points, you would get to thirty-seven. So that might be like the worst case that we could ever imagine imposing on people. And then we're coming, we're sort of backing off of that to get to a level we feel is meaningful, but also achievable and, and reasonable, given the, kind of the, the size of projects in, in your city.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So on the cost effectiveness, it, has that been, you know, calculated on how long it will take a homeowner who meets either the eight or the seventeen or nineteen to recoup? How many years will it take for them to recoup the money that was invested in those energy efficiency?
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is yes, for each measure. So it says, what's the effective life of each measure? What's its incremental cost compared to a baseline? So say a regular gas tank water heater costs, I don't know what it costs. Say it costs a thousand dollars now. And the heat pump hot water heater costs fifteen hundred dollars. Then it would say, over the life of that product, would it recoup, would the owner recoup their five hundred dollar investment? Then it would be determined to be cost effective. So it does say you get all your money back that you spent, but it's saying if you make this investment in energy efficiency, you will get your money back. And that's the cost effectiveness test.
Based on the life of that unit?
That unit, right. So windows, you know, forty years, you know, water heater, probably fifteen years. Air ceiling, I don't know what it is, five to seven, because cock dries out. Yeah, okay. It's basically saying the state does a whole bunch of stuff that we rely on. And that's the source of the, really the score for each of these measures. So it's not something that we can really tinker with at the, the local level. If, and Myra brought it up, if we want to have this be reviewed and sort of validated by the Energy Commission, which is an important step that has to happen before it can go into effect. And we've talked about some of this already. You know, you get to three hundred square feet, they may already be doing some things that are included in flex path, like upgrading the water heater, upgrading the heating and cooling or adding insulation. And then we see it's about ten projects a year.
They're having an open house over there. That's, everything's cool.
National night out tonight, yes.
Oh, that's right. Okay, a little more to go. Just some exceptions. So if you're just repairing things, that's exact, you know, exempted. We've talked about this twenty percent of the project valuation. So I think you would need to say, there is no pathway I can take that doesn't result in me spending more than twenty percent of the total value of the project. And then you would be able to get an exception. But you couldn't just pick the most expensive items and throw your hands up. You get credit, Taylor mentioned this, for things that have been done in the past. We know that historic buildings have unique requirements, particularly around windows, sometimes about exterior materials, so it'd be exempt. If you're doing things around fire hardening or seismic retrofit, that wouldn't count because we're thinking you're doing proactive, smart things. You know, if you're bolting your foundation or I don't know, changing your roof to something that's less combustible, that shouldn't really trigger this, this requirement.
Can I go back? So I, the question is, is really the leeway or flexibility that our planning department will have. So for example, let's go with the bedroom example. And you, you exercise some of your choices and it comes to eighteen percent. But it doesn't get you to your points yet. So then if you take any next item to get you to the number of points, it will take you over twenty percent. What would happen then in that scenario? Would the person have to spend more or would they spend just enough to get us to get to as many points as they can get, but not exceed twenty? But if you were talking about something binary, like doing something or not doing something, would they be sad, would it be sufficient to say it's, you're, you're at eighteen percent of the cost, but you don't have all your points and go ahead?
And anything else would make you spend twenty-two percent?
It's really more like a leeway question. What kind of leeway does the department have?
So often this is when it says, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think.
It sounded like he was coming from here.
I was gonna say, often this is where it says at the discretion of the Community Development Director. That's, so that's where the leeway should probably exist and that can be done at the staff level administratively.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Especially if the person's showing goodwill and proper intention. Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I was gonna say, my recommendation is to, you know, grant them that exception if they can demonstrate that whatever additional measure they take would push them over that twenty percent. But again, I would confirm that with the planning department and just make sure we're on board, but that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay, oh.
Back to the slides.
Okay, just a few more. If it's just a roof or window upgrade, it would be exempt. You wouldn't have to get points for other things. If it's a manufactured home, factory-built housing. Those are kind of built under different standards. That's partly why they're on here. Anything that's in climate zone sixteen, which apparently is one house that's in the national forest. The reason that's on there is because all of the other point valuation is based on climate zone nine.
Right.
And we didn't want to have like, if climate zone nine, if, we just said, if you're in sixteen, there's only one building, let's make it exempt. All, all accessory dwelling units would be exempt. And then also, if, you know, you, the only way that you would be able to get there is if you were choosing an EPC covered appliance, which then the city can't make you do that. But I think there's enough, there's certainly enough flexibility to probably avoid that problem entirely.
Would are, would the tiny homes that we just approved fall into the ADU exemption?
I would think so. I don't know, but that would be my sense or.
Yes. And if it's not explicit, we can make it explicit in the ordinance, I think in the staff report.
Okay. I mean, it seems reasonable to put that in the same.
Right, it's a main single family residence only.
Yep.
Check.
More, more, okay.
Cool. Thank you for that.
Okay, and then we have a few examples. So this would be an alteration over three hundred square feet, four hundred and forty square feet. It's remodeling an existing room. It would then be over three hundred, have a target score of eight, and then you can see they might choose under compliance path. Let's do it backwards. So compliance path two, not having to touch appliances, duct ceiling, attic insulation, like I showed, two things, done, eight points. You can see that could be the compliance cost, four and a half percent. And then compliance path one, someone could just say, I'm going to upgrade my water heater. I needed eight points. I have twelve. I'm done. And, and so this is a thing they could choose. It's also aligned with what we would like to have happen is, you know, more movement towards electrification. But again, we're not boxing people into that. Another example, more than three hundred, but less than a thousand. Adding six hundred and seventy-one square foot, second story and adding to the first floor. We'll do it backwards too. Chooses duct ceiling, attic and insulation. And they would get their eight points again. Or they could do the space heater, so heat pump, heating and cooling, which I think is seven points. And then the duct ceiling would get you another three, I believe. It would get you to ten over the eight points. There's a couple of what this right might really mean in practice. And then we have an over thousand square foot project. Remodeling in existing space. And you could see, they could choose, we'll do compliance path two again, new ducts, windows, attic insulation and wall insulation would get you to your nineteen points. I think those are the same ones I had in yellow. And you see roughly four point three percent cost increase. Or you could go straight to the heat pump hot water heater and the heat pump space heater. Those two together would be nineteen points. So there's a lot of sort of mix and match, but you can, can see how we've structured it. So we, we kind of meet all of these, these tests. Lastly, this is just pre-wiring. So this would be a project that's under three hundred square feet, but the mandatory pre-wiring requirements would still be in place. So you'd say you do need to put in the two forty for your future induction cooktop and have a space in your electrical panel for that future load. But you don't have to, don't have to put in the induction cooktop. This can be a point of much contention about stove change outs. And then these next slides just show the fact that there are incentives and on the next slide, tax credits that can pay for some of these things in some instances for some people. So.
Would you just go back to, I just want to see the cost of the pre-wiring in your example.
I mean, it's putting in Romex.
And I actually have to clarify this slide. This should say three hundred square feet. So the, the minimum trigger for this entire ordinance is three hundred square feet. So it would need to meet the square footage and the electrical permit requirement in order to meet the electric readiness requirements.
Yeah, well, sorry, maybe I'm misunderstanding. What I'm hearing is even if it's under three hundred square feet, then there would be, the mandatory requirements would still be in place for anything, any condition? That's not true. Okay?
No, it would, the project would have to meet the minimum square footage threshold to meet these requirements. So smaller projects would need to comply with this.
Okay, so it shouldn't say two hundred square feet. It should say three hundred square.
It should say three hundred.
So I was confused about this slide.
No.
So it says three hundred, then this is a slide that says, what do we mean by pre-wiring?
Okay.
And then this would give you an example to say you need to put in the, the wire in probably a junction box in a space in the panel, but you don't have to necessarily change out your stove or oven.
Thanks for the clarification.
Would you need to change out your panel?
No, if you go back. Yeah, there's exceptions if service or panel upgrades are required to meet the electric readiness requirements.
Okay.
So the answer is supposed to be no. So if you, you know.
You should have.
We're not trying, we're, this is supposed to be set up, so you should not have to upgrade your panel because we understand that that can be expensive.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. So hope, you know, if there's space to have a dedicated circuit, but like my panel, out of space. You know, and I checked and I was like, that's a lot of money. So, you know, it's squeezed out all we can from the circuits that are there, but it is a big, a big investment.
So, so you're just exempt if your panels, you don't have to do the pre-wire?
I think you would have to do the wiring. This is always a little confusing for me, just to be honest, how it actually works in practice. I think you would have to have the wire going from where the future outlet is going to go. And then there is, Myra sent me stuff yesterday, I think, that is in the building code currently that lays it all out. The type of wire and where it's supposed to go and how the, the ends of them are noted so you can find them.
But it's not active.
But it's not active.
So, so you're only.
Right, it wouldn't terminate at the panel.
Panel, right.
Yeah.
Reserving space, yeah.
But what you're doing effectively is saying, when you are going to upgrade, you're ready to upgrade because you have the internal wiring in place. Even if you have to do your panel end and then the appliance.
Yeah, so like probably in this kitchen upgrade, they tore off all the old cabinets and they opened up the walls because they were moving plumbing around. You go, yes, put in the wire for the, the two twenty in there. And then someone can fish it out at a later date when you do the panel upgrade and you put in the electric stove.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. This is, I'm not going to go through this in a lot of detail. Just says, you know, in different cases, there is funding out there. There are incentives and rebates. And then for some people, if you are paying taxes, then you can get a tax credit. You know, have to keep in mind, not everybody is paying enough, has enough income to be paying enough taxes to avail themselves of the tax credit. But if that's the case, then these tax credits have been available in the past. But if that's the case, then these tax credits have been available in the past. And then this just shows that in terms of implementation, TRC is basically positioned to help and has worked with a number of agencies to go through the next step of talking about now there needs to be a checklist and there needs to be fact sheets and other information for homeowners and information for contractors. And they're prepared to develop and prepare all of the, all of that stuff, working with the city. And there we go.
Super. Appreciate it. Any questions?
You're welcome.
I've got a quick.
Yeah, go.
You mentioned that there is a, a number of different cities that already have these programs going. And I think I, I tried to read quickly. It looked like there are about five of them.
Something like that, yeah.
And, and are they far enough along that we know the experience that they're having with? I can answer one. San Luis Obispo I met with, and then also Santa Cruz, I met with a customer who did it underneath. That it wasn't in the form of a question though, so I was gonna save it for the discussion part, but I got a lot of feedback there and it's. Well, I'm fine with you helping him answer. Oh, sure. What the feedback is from other, or what the experience is with other communities who are implementing. They, it was very good. San Luis Obispo, I heard from the department and then on the, it was just the one instance of the customer in Santa Cruz also good. But the, in San Luis Obispo, it was, they slow rolled it out. They worked closely with the community and actually they said something that's kind of funny, which was it was a middle ground between sort of, you might say, the people who are very environmentally focused and the people very focused on not just home hardening, but building costs. At least this individual thought they really achieved this middle ground. They had five hundred square feet though. That was their threshold, but they have many more projects than we do. So it was about an hour, twenty-minute discussion and we worked through some scenarios, but in general, very positive and with a lot of slow rolling in the planning department going out made the, the big difference. And, and your conversation was with the planning department? It, I believe it was the lead planner in San Luis Obispo and then just with one person building a, a spare room in San.
Thank you, Mayor Gilman, and I can actually follow up on that because we've, we helped San Luis Obispo develop their ordinance. And they were actually thinking about reducing their threshold because they weren't capturing as many projects as they would have hoped. But with AB one thirty coming along, decided to just keep it the same. So yeah, that's just additional context that they would have loved to capture more projects than where they're at now. I know that, we also helped Santa Cruz. I know Lucas met with County Marin to also get some feedback on how their implementation is going. They've had theirs for at least a year. And so I, I don't recall how that conversation went, but that informed a lot of, you know, decisions to develop this, this workshop. Have a kind of rollout between when the ordinance gets adopted and when it's actually enforced. So to continue the education to contractors and the general workforce.
No, thank you. Just to go, they were, they actually had elected voluntarily to do that. So it wasn't like they had to get pushed to do anything. And it was a relative, my sister who lives in Santa Cruz. So there wasn't a lot of, I couldn't, with that one instance, it wasn't a lot of back and forth around. They, they were choosing it. So, but at least going through that process seemed okay for them.
And they were, they were building. They were doing an addition basically as opposed to a remodel.
Uh, no, sorry. They were redoing the part that's the, their sort of garage part that's near the house. So they were doing that part that's attached to the house.
Okay. They were doing a remodel. Okay, thank you.
No, good. Thanks. Yeah? Shall we go to public comment? Now, I have so few public comments. I think some people just need their cards to be turned in. But I will start. Or just trying to be preemptive. Let me start with Larry Steingold and then Mark Whitman, please. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Good evening. Hope everybody has a nice evening. Larry Steingold, resident.
Is the mic on there?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
From what I understand, there are twenty-four hundred single-family homes in Ojai. We have fifty percent of this, the housing stock is rented. This is only gonna apply to the people in the single-family homes. This is going to take decades. Probably more than decades to do whatever you're trying to accomplish with this. So to me, it's a little disingenuous. I mentioned this with Andy at the meeting on, I don't know, Monday. Is that if you're going to do this and we're going to make people fire harden their homes, which I don't know if this building code also affects changes on that, I'm not sure. But if we're gonna affect people's homes for environmental and for climate, whether I agree or not, all right? For energy efficiency, make it upon sale, make it upon renewal of a lease. So that this gets done in an appropriate time manner. This is like, this, it's a hollow gesture. It makes everybody feel good. It makes you people feel good. It's, oh, I took care of these constituents and they're happy. We're doing a little here and a little there. But if you're gonna do it, let's just do it. And make it, I know it's gonna be expensive. I know, but most of these people, including myself, need to have duct work sealed. And you insulate this and insulate that. Homes out here are not necessarily insulated, their walls, for a whole host of reasons. Some of which is moisture and, I don't know, but back east, everything's insulated. All right, here we've done, we have double pane windows. We have this, we have that. But do it upon sale. Do it upon lease renewal. Tenants deserve to have energy efficient homes. I mean, other homeowner, investors aren't going to spend the money unless they can raise the rent on the next tenant. All right, but why not do it for present tenants? All the people who live here, who want to stay here, don't they deserve energy efficient homes? Don't they deserve to have, pay a little less on their electric, but they should be willing to pay more to get the houses renovated? So the landlords have to be able to pass along the increase in the cost amortized above the four percent cap. Otherwise, there's no incentive to do any of this stuff. And because, you know, Luca said there's a handful here and five here and ten there. This is gonna take forever. And by that time, codes will change. It, it'll be a, but just start the process because then it's off your plate. It's over. It's done on, on, on purchase and done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Mark Whitman, Bill Miley and Erica Helson.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm with the city council staff. Good to be here. Mark Whitman, architect here in Ojai. And I participated in early workshops that, when it was first presented. And I, I think this approach is, is similar to the LEED system that we've been working with. And also there's a Greenpoint system that some of us in the green building industry have been working with and, and it follows those principles. And, and I agree with the consultant's approach, being fair to the public and to the users of the system. And this approach is, is fairly simple and comprehensive. And, and I wholeheartedly support this approach to energy efficiency and carbon reduction. And I just have a few editorial comments. This ordinance creates a, a minor hardship to its user, but a major investment to our future. We are in a climate crisis, which the city of Ojai recognizes. An action should immediately be taken towards carbon reduction. Until a net zero level of carbon increase is achieved, is achieved. There are many approaches to carbon reduction. But much thought and energy has gone into this flex path, path approach. And I think we should respect the, you know, what, what it has gone in so far. I know we're on our deadline, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Because talk is cheap. And, and, but action such as this will great power and can ripple through our society and give us hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Bill Miley and then Erica Helson.
Hello.
Hi.
I feel sorry for the city planning commission. This item, in my opinion, is certainly part of their responsibility. This was a way to meet the deadline.
Do you want to come back in a minute?
No, that's okay. So I see this, bringing this to the city council as a way of meeting the state exemption opportunity, rather than having to wait until two thousand and thirty-one, you want to get this done. But I believe that the, the planning commission was the better venue to have this as a workshop. You would have gotten a lot more people, I believe. Okay. So I want you to seriously again consider offering homeowners, especially low-income homeowners, homeowners, a no-cost energy audit to assess what their structure can be improved through in making it more energy efficient. I think I've said this, and I'll say it again. I bought a nineteen-sixties house, built in nineteen sixty. I bought, bought it in nineteen seventy-eight. It had no roof insulation. It's in Ojai. It's on North Signal. Maybe they built it without a permit. I don't know. It had no wall insulation. And so the first year we were there, we wondered why the air conditioner wasn't keeping the house below ninety. So, we had really good batts put on the roof. We contacted Eagle Installation of Oak View. Who punk, who put two hundred and ten holes in the exterior walls. Blew-in insulation. I was the one that, after they plugged it, cosmetically covered up the two hundred and ten holes and my wife Cookie. She said, let's see how good you are, Bill. She couldn't find a one. So I wanna kinda Chris, you in a way, I think that you should have done this earlier in the year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miley. Erica Helson.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
All right, I just wanted to share a few comments. I did a renovation. It was an addition and a renovation of my home in two thousand and twenty, that I think would have been sort of like a case study of this code. So I just wanted to share my experience and I'm happy to answer questions too. So I had a nineteen-fifties home, not a lot of work done on it. I, we renovated about a hundred square feet and then added about three hundred square feet. So it definitely would have been required to comply with this. And we ended up doing most of the measures that were on that list. So we added attic insulation. Interesting thing about the windows, the home, because it was, you know, it's like so many of the homes in town, like had gone through partial renovations. So it had some single pane windows and some double pane windows. So we updated the single pane windows to double pane windows. So I think it would have gotten us to that one point because the whole home eventually had double pane windows. We didn't have an air conditioning unit, so we added a heat pump. We needed to move the water heater, so we went ahead and upgraded it. So there were all these reasons why we were already doing the work. It made sense to do the efficiency improvements as well. I also wanted to share, there's some resources available in the county that I think could help the staff with the compliance. So through the county, there's a program called the Energy Code Coach with the city of San Luis Obispo. I know we've talked about their ordinance a bit. The Code Coach developed a checklist and support for the plans examiners as well as residents when they're going through their renovations. So the, the Code Coach can build custom materials for what the community needs to help support adoption. There are also, I think, some of the comments I've heard about, what can we do for renters? There are so many energy efficiency programs available across the state. We all pay into them on our utility bills. And I think we just need to do a better job of getting the information out to residents. So maybe that's something that the city can help do. I just read about a Edison program this morning that offers audits. So just wanted to share that there are a lot of resources out there that I think could help us if we adopted this. And thanks to the council for considering it. I think it's a great opportunity for Ojai to show climate leadership. Thanks to the staff for working on it and also to our engaged residents for getting the grant that helped get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all the cards I have. Anybody online?
Yes, Mayor, we have Zoom participants, but currently no raised hands. Let's just give them a moment. Zoom participants, I'm speaking to you and we are on public comment period for item one on the agenda. And Mayor, we still have no raised hands?
Okay.
We can move on.
Right. Please.
Yeah, so I have a rather bold suggestion. And, and I think that you spoke to it, the nexus of fire hardening and climate resiliency. And I think I spoke to it last time that the idea of mandating fire hardening and mandating, you know, electrification was a little bit, was one more mandate than I was comfortable with. Especially given electrification because it's, you know, it is an existential crisis, but as they say, it's way far away. I mean, it's not something you can see like you can a fire. You know what I mean? So it's a different kind of existential crisis. And I know that I talked to Taylor and to Mara earlier today about this. But there are within that list of sixteen, six of those point, you know, E four, five, seven, eight, ten and eleven that are also fire hardening measures. So, you know, and, and I think that we also spoke to Myra about potentially figuring out how we could meld the two. And I think there are a lot of benefits in melding the two. And, you know, whether if you're doing new duct work, well, can you put ember screens up at the same time? Most duct work goes out somewhere. Could you add that? Could you get points for that? So, and if you were to do the fire hardening and add this to this electrification flex plan, which by the way, I think it's a great model. I, I really appreciate it. I appreciate giving people choice. I, you know. So that's why the idea of fire hardening as well and giving people some choices. The model's great. I would just like to extend it to also include basic fire hardening sort of requirements, not, you know, and, and there are, I, I think that we could come up with some and, and assign a point value to them without, so you wouldn't have to change the entire model. But would allow people to feel a certain, I think it would allow people to feel a certain sense of security that they were doing fire hardening. Because they don't really get that with electrification. Some people do, you know, it's a moral imperative and, but you know, it's not the same kind of payback that you get from, from hardening your home for fire as we're looking at the Gifford Fire. And, you know, every, every, every week there's a new fire. So I would like, and finally, if we were to go into a melding of the fire hardening and electrification, we could, and this would be up to people who, who, you know, know this better. We could get an exemption from the September thirtieth date. And so then there's also the idea of the heart, the cart before the horse. We're supposed to be finishing our strategic plan. Not, and, and so this could find a natural place in there with the goals and with the tactics.
How would, what, the exemption on the September thirtieth?
Yeah, because it's fire hardening, possibly.
So, no, not possibly. Regardless of what happens with this ordinance, fire hardening is always available to you during the moratorium. That's imposed by AB one thirty slash three oh six. So, but it requires us engaging with the fire district and getting recommendations from them on what they recommend for fire hardening. It wouldn't be something that we as the city could pick on our own. It would have to be a collaborative effort. But that is, that will be available to the city after the deadline has passed.
Just to clarify, so the, the fire hardening, we could access anytime and get that feedback. But that, that would not alter the September thirtieth to get this in before the moratorium passes on everything except.
So
Yeah.
I'm going to say it back to you to make sure I answered.
All right, good.
So the, the electrification ordinance, like the flex path, has to be adopted and sent to the state before the deadline to be effective. Fire hardening doesn't have that same requirement. You could do it at any time.
So my point being that if we had things that were both fire hardening and electrification, as six of the 16 are, if we had all of those, then we could conceivably have both. You know, if all of them do both, and as long as you have fire hardening in there, you're exempt from the deadline because it's fire hardening.
I think that's not what you're saying.
No, what I'm saying is you can do fire hardening, the fire hardening isn't subject to the moratorium.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that if we went to fire hardening, we would not be stuck with the September 30th deadline, as long as we made sure that all of the choices that were in that were both fire hardening and electrification.
One small insertion, possibly. It would just be, I, I like the idea, it's interesting. I would not want to have us decide what the point system is and what those pieces would be. I would probably want to go to people who know more than we do about what kind of system that would be, so.
Well, that would be Myra, who's on.
Well, I guess what I mean, I was trying to say, to me, they could continue to be separated and still be okay.
Well, they could, but then we're going to have two mandates. And we're going to have, we're going to be forcing people to do electrification. And, you know, once again, there's a psychological barrier to that. And, you know, incentives are always better. We want to incentivize the crisis, which we went, we're talking about incentivizing fire. But in actuality, we should be requiring fire and incentivizing electrification because of the urgency of one and the lack of urgency on another.
I like the principle of it. I'm asking a question about how it would unfold, but I hear, I get it.
Well, I think, is Myra still on the line? Because she had some, you guys talked to her, I didn't, but you said that you had spoken with her and she had some ideas around it. So basically, you know, my time is up, but that to me is a better solution. I think it solves a lot of problems.
Let's hear it.
There is a nexus.
Yeah. What, what do you like, what do you think about that idea?
Myra? So there isn't a guarantee that that would, the combination of the two would be able to be approved by the BSC and the CEC after September 30th. I see those as two very distinct ordinances. And the CEC, I don't know how the CEC really gets involved with the fire hardening requirements. So we've done a lot of research on what are some reach, what are some opportunities for fire hardening, reach codes. And so it would take, it would be a, a, a different process from our typical building, energy efficiency type of ordinances. And so without being able to guarantee, from, getting a guarantee from the CEC and the BSC confirmation that they would accept this type of ordinance after September 30th, you're at risk of not getting your flex path approved.
Can you clarify, you're talking about the electrification portion of it, correct?
About the, the entire flex path.
The current ordinance that we're talking about this evening is the one that you're talking about. Not a fire hardening additional ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Not a fire hardening addition.
And you don't see the combination of the two as being, like, what would be required if you were to be, if you were to meld all of them? And your flex path, does it, would it still need to be approved by an agency? I mean, we don't, the approval by an agency is, it really doesn't affect us in one way or another. I mean, we can ourselves make the ordinance. We don't have to have any agency rubber stamp our flex plan, as I understand, I mean, as I understand it.
We do have to submit it to the state. That is one of the requirements, and we have to submit it before the September 30th deadline.
What are we submitting, though? That's what I'm.
The ordinance. We can't implement the ordinance until the CEC approves it.
What ordinance can't we implement?
The flex path that we're discussing this evening.
Okay, but if we were not going to be implementing that flex path?
So if you chose to do a fire hardening only ordinance, I need to double check. My understanding is, I believe we would still potentially need to submit it, but I can confirm before the next meeting. But that ordinance wouldn't, we wouldn't have the same time limitation.
Right. I'm just saying that, I, I, from what I understand, we are, we are our own town. We can pass an ordinance if we want to pass an ordinance. We can pass a flex ordinance if we want to pass a flex ordinance.
No, not with AB 130.
There's a moratorium that is going into effect by all the ordinances that are amending the building codes in, I would, best way to put this is an unusual way, right? The, the type of innovative thing that Ojai is talking about this evening, that would need to be in place before September 30th and submitted to the CEC.
We couldn't do it after that.
And then, and then you're, and then the, any amendments that you can do is minimal, if any, during the moratorium period.
So you're saying if you combine the electrification, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to work through this. If you combine the electrification and the fire hardening, you would still need to get it approved by September 30th? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Well, if I could hear, I'm trying to, I'm sympathetic to what you're saying. And I, I guess if we did our, if we hypothetically, let's say there was the motion for this to go forward, and it does go forward, and then we work and we get some outside consultation about what is the best measures for, for fire hardening. I'm hearing you say there's going to be some weight on the building of, of our customers to say there's too much ordinance going on. And I'm saying, it, it might be that way, but I think that's okay. That's what you're saying that the stakes are, is we don't want to overburden people with too many ordinances?
Yeah, well, it's more psychological, you know, mandate. If, if six of the 16 are combined already. You know, and I understand how much work went into finding the other 10. But is it possible, like perhaps even, you know, like I thought, okay, is new ducks and duck sealing, would that be ember screens? Do we now have seven out of 16?
Well, can I just, I think we're, we're hearing the argument good. But let me just hear from other people, too.
So I'm good with that, I just.
I get, I get the argument.
You guys get it.
I think if you had a purely fire hardening focused ordinance that went separately after the deadline, that would be okay.
Well, and I.
This ordinance is structured. Yes, and then this ordinance, though, is structured for electrification, is the first priority, and there is a fire hardening benefit. Does that help?
No, I understand that. I understand what you're saying. I totally do.
I also.
But let's just hear from other folks.
Yeah, so I guess my first comment is that we, you know, we're talking about this as an electrification ordinance, and, and it's really not. It has the impact of, of making electrification a convenient path. But the real goal of this ordinance is energy efficiency. So, you know, the idea is if we reduce our energy consumption as a society, then we're going to have less emissions all across. And, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of a, it's a big and lofty goal, but this is a, something that we can do that would, you know, move us in that direction.
Good clarification.
So on, I've actually been thinking a lot about fire hardening as a mandate. And, you know, I think we'll be talking about this this afternoon, or this evening. I actually wanted to talk about it at the last fire hardening meeting. But I don't, if, you know, if we want to do a mandate that in order to get a permit, you've got to do ember screening, no matter what the project is? And maybe there's a threshold, it's got to be $1,000 or more construction? I want that to start, like, at square one, not at 300 square feet. If, if we're going to say.
Well, do you want to save this for the conversation, for the next item?
Yeah, I mean, and I can, I can say, but, but the idea is that we can do fire hardening. There seems to be, and I think, you know, we have to find the right place, and it's going to take some staff time and some feedback from the community. What will they, what will they accept as mandates on fire hardening if it means that we're going to make the community safer? And I think that's a, that's a much longer discussion with a lot of community input. And I, you know, I support it. I don't, I don't think we should, you know, dilute the, the idea of, of doing something for energy efficiency. Yeah, you know, I know we're not voting on anything tonight on this project, correct? I mean, this is, this is an information item, so I won't go, you know, too much more. But I, I guess my last comment is going to be, you know, I watched what happened to, you know, reach codes and the, and the restaurant industry and followed all of that very closely. And I'm actually, and I, you know, and I think Matt Summers, you know, let us know that there was going to be a, a response. I, I think this is a brilliant response to the idea that we cannot regulate energy transmission lines. But we can impact, and Walker, Mr. Wells said this much more articulately than I can. We can regulate our land, you know, our, our structural spaces. And, and I think it's been done really smartly, and it's been done in a way that I think is, you know, very tolerant of what, it, it bends a lot for that community member who may be resistant. It's not going to be like a big slap in the face. It's going to be not a huge, you know, commitment on their part. And it's just a great goal for us to have.
I agree with you, it's a, it's a middle ground.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with you on those points. I personally think it would be, I think it's, there's an advantage to separating fire hardening from this for a few, a few different reasons. First of all, because it, because it allows people to know that what they're choosing is going to make a difference in terms of their bills, their, their energy bills, their energy, energy consumption. And so it, it, it's, to me, it's, it's a separate, it's a separate aim, it's a separate goal, even though there is some overlap. And I also agree with Councilmember Whitman that, that fire hardening, that, that honestly, the Ventura Fire Department is going to be mandating certain things that we do. The zero zone, thank you. And so there are already mandates that are going in for fire hardening. And this isn't really a mandate, this is just a selection of, of what do you want to do to make your house more comfortable and to make things more energy efficient? And I think one of the things that, that Mr. Wells said that, that really struck a chord with me is that when we're talking about energy efficiency and, and the, our partnership with the Clean Power Alliance, what we're really talking about is we're talking about the quality of air that we breathe. And as someone who has had asthma off and on in my life, I can feel it when the air quality goes down and when it goes up. And some people, especially children whose lungs are developing, are so sensitive to that. And so we're making a statement as a council about protecting our air and protecting our environment. And, and so I, I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but I am very much in favor of this. And, and I'm also in favor of moving forward, and we're going to talk about this in the next meeting. But I think also another reason for separating this from any fire hardening initiatives is that we can move this forward, and then we can develop a really robust fire hardening policy and, and associate that with our, our building codes. And, and, and that's something that I'm definitely a proponent of.
Yeah, please.
Okay. You've convinced me. I have to say, sure. But I do also have to say that this is going to have a negligible effect. And, and I just think a mandate with a negligible effect is performative at best. And in principle, I am against that. But I understand that there is hefty weight around the principle, the other principle. So I, I, I do agree, actually, that we should separate the two. I think that that's probably much smarter. The only thing I would say is there any way to add a little bit of, like a half a point to the ones that are, you know? That's all I would say.
We could ask them to encourage.
I, I, I thank my fellow council members for your thoughts on this, and rock on.
Can I, I want to add one more thing to, so it's more than performative, and I'm going to add an example. So we did a little bit of kitchen renovation, not anything major. But, you know, I, we got an induction stove, and I had no idea what was going to go into getting that induction, induction cooktop. And I thought, you know, it led to some arguments around the home. But, but, you know, there's a lot that you have to do to prepare for that, including having your electrician run through the attic and pull lines. And, and it, it can be really, it, I think it's, it's a, by saying even just that one thing, like you're setting your, your, your future self or future home buyers up for something that they're probably going to do anyway, because induction's so awesome, and why wouldn't you want to do it? But also because things are moving toward electrification. And so it's, it's a, and so there is benefit. If you've got your walls open already and you're already in there doing the work, there's a benefit in just doing a little bit more.
I'll just share, we cut the hedges in our front yard for creating our Zone Zero, which is coming. And we installed double-pane glass in the front, which, you know, is expensive. When we did it for the fire, the sound and the insulation, and we're really pleased that we did that, you know? So anyway, those were good choices. But I just want to mention one thing, which is, I did ask Mr. Seibert, which I do want to have a policy of always asking the staff who was on the ground, who's going to have to actually do this, what do you really think, honestly? And he said that he does like this. He thinks it's with the slow rollout and this time going to January 31st, it's doable. And in the spirit of Ojai, those are his words. So that gives me a lot of confidence in this moving forward.
And so I just wanted to make one quick comment. And, you know, Larry, maybe your, Mr. Stein Gold, maybe your neighbors get a little bit upset with you. But, you know, you, you got me thinking about the idea, is there some, is there some low-level thing of, you know, that we can have a very limited threshold and would have a much broader impact? Like, say, hey, sell your house, you got to seal your ducks. And I'm just using that as an example. But it would be, it would be one of those low-expense things. But every time there was a sale or a transfer of occupation, they had to do this thing, and maybe it only moves the needle a little bit for, but at least everybody's kind of aware and engaging in it. And I'm, I'm really interested in maybe hearing from our, Mr. Wells and, 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 you know, our, our, our environmental group about, like, good ideas about how we could, you know, do something that would impact, you know, most homeowners instead of.
Well, and I've, I've had many conversations with people, which is, to your point, Ms. Ruhl, that there are many things that we are not talking about very much, because they are very challenging, such as our food choices. And they're just harder. So we have made all these, we've made choices around building, but there's many things we could do around climate. But let, there's no point in pontificating right now. It sounds like we're saying we like this to go forward, and we are ready for a first reading at the next meeting, right? Okay. Yeah, is there anything more? Then, there, there was no changes that I heard.
Okay, that's just what we want, you know, we're, and obviously there's no action, but we were also looking at there was input for modifications. As it stands, we'll bring the ordinance.
There's only the one date change, which I'm sure you'll get.
Yeah.
I made three notes to make sure it gets fixed.
Yeah, man.
So I'm just going to, I can't get that half a point, huh? No way? I, I know.
It doesn't affect energy.
There just isn't a methodology to.
Well, maybe an asterisk, then, just to say, just, I don't know, it seems to me to be reasonable.
But you're opening the threshold to non-energy consumption pieces.
Let me say what's been on my mind, is this fire hardening is so important that it needs its own process to do it.
Yeah, I totally agree.
You don't want to just fold it in with this, and there's so many things to think about. There's zero zone, and there's things in the code. And there's things in the code already. There's a chapter 7A that applies to highest fire severity zones. You know, do you wanna apply it to, you know, it applies to very high? Do you wanna apply it to high? There's third party standards like fortified and fortified plus. It just needs.
Right. No, no, yeah, I agree. If I, if I were looking at that list though, if I saw an asterisk that said this is also fire hardening, I would take note of that. That's not to say that it would be a decisive factor in it, but I would take note of it.
You, you will include, I'm presuming that will be included in what you have asterisks.
I'm happy to update the recitals to reflect the fire hardening benefits that this ordinance provides.
You know, just an asterisk with a little note.
Okay.
It would make a difference to me. I would think about it. I would not say I would go there.
Yeah, well, that approach seems, seems to work.
We could also add it to the frequently asked questions.
Their website page would be nice to.
The, many, many of the efficiency standard programs would actually protect your home from fire.
Great. Okay. Wonderful. Love it.
Yeah, okay.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Wells. And my proposal is let's take a five minute break before we go to our next item. Thank you. Cool.
Other than maybe asking what other people do. Check, check, one, two. Okay. We'll be back in session. Mr. Jenkins, you're gonna stay back there, which is fine. I don't care. Whatever you want. No, it's fine. Your placard's here. So, I wanna make a proposal, but this is just coming from one guy, and I wanna hear from you guys. My proposal is, let's, my proposal is, let's have a natural stop at nine o'clock wherever we're at. That's a proposal. I'm hoping that you're amenable to that. Because we're not gonna get done.
We can't just go till it's done.
We can go till it's done, and I think a long time.
I'm an interjector.
But then, the other idea is that Mr. Whitman brought up a couple of ideas related to, it seemed to me, our fire mitigation goal, which we did talk about already. That was our number two. But now, again, I'm open to some conversation here, but let me tell you what I would like to avoid. What I wanna avoid is, there's two things I wanna avoid. If we have really good ideas, we don't wanna be silly and not pay attention to them. But we also don't wanna go back and revisit every single goal and come up with new tactics constantly, and then think about how do we vote them all again. So, Mr. Whitman, when you, I didn't hear your whole list, I heard a couple of things, and I did look at items that seem like they could squeeze into a tactic. I'm looking at 2D, which we, which is a little bit of a catch-all tactic. So, I wanna hear from you guys. I'm hearing nine o'clock sounds good, but I also wanna hear what, how do we wanna proceed when things come up that we might wanna include? Do we wanna go back to wildfire safety and risk mitigation? Tweak those things and then go forward? Do we wanna go to where we left off at six, diversifying our economy? I'm asking you what you guys want. Okay.
I was planning to ask Ben this question.
Okay. Great.
So, my understanding is that, you know, our goals and our tactics are really, you know, kind of a guide for Ben and staff to bring things forward when, you know, when they've been studied to the point or they're ready to come to us. But it's also my understanding that at any point in time, we can decide that we wanna take an issue and run with it, and, you know, this is an important issue and we need to move it forward.
Yep, I totally agree.
So, we're not like locked in when we, you know, so...
Those are just like your budget. We see them as, what I am saying, and I put this on the website, that you've adopted nine goals, and I'm saying that you're working on your tactics. But that doesn't mean you couldn't add a goal, remove a goal. When we're putting in tactics, I'm gonna be very clear, that say, these are the prioritized tactics, meaning we're working on them first, but that doesn't mean that you can't have an exhaustive list that we are running down. What I really wanna get to is things are coming on the agenda really only a few different ways. One, they're on the goals and tactic list, and we have a work plan, and it's like, okay, that's where the work is coming from. If you're wondering what we're gonna be doing, here it is. You know, the second way would be, you know, if there's a, you know, two-member request at the end of the meeting for an issue that emerges, or mayor decides to put something on the agenda. That would really, just to kinda make it very clear to the council and the public what we're focused on. And for staff, so that we can allocate our time appropriately to.
I was thinking of the last point, really, because a lot of us could come up with a lot of things we would love you to work on, and you can't work on them all. So, we wanna make sure that we have some agreement, but I think we're all agreeing on both things.
Because what I'm gonna start asking you guys, and it might sound a little rude, but sometimes we'll be like, well, is that a goal, or is that a tactic? I mean, we can make it that, but if it's not, you know...
That's why I liked our, the way that we voted on, you know, the top two or three things. We were making a statement to say, these are the things that we value for staff time and us. But again, that doesn't, I don't, I never wanna be foolish enough to say, here's a really good idea, let's ignore it, because we have a plan. No, we should always look at good ideas.
We can always come back and modify, always, always.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Oh, and sorry, the other important thing is, we're also gonna come back with, you know, with cost once the tactics are final. Here's what we think the costs are, and yes, these will, a lot of these, most of them probably require a budget amendment, but that's okay, too. That's why you guys are here. You're here to decide how to use these resources.
That's right.
Yeah, so I, just answering your question, and I do, you know, potentially fits into, I can't remember which one, but if we're talking about, I guess, climate resiliency. But we really did fire hardening previously. You know, I have no problem with avoiding that tonight, 'cause I do have a bunch of ideas as, they're just kinda maybe, we can, you know, do these things.
On the fire side, you mean, or on the climate side?
On the fire, on the fire side. So, I, I'll, I'll, and some of them have a question about what's, you know, what's legal and what's feasible. So, I'll work with legal, and I'll work with community development as to what, you know, we can do in terms of, you know, if you're gonna get a permit to do this, what do we, you know, what can we impose? And then, I guess the other thing is just, can we enforce what the state has in place for, you know, mandatory fire hardening? Can we move forward when we see that people are not, you know, doing it? And what, does the community want us to do that because they're that concerned about fire? I mean, that's a, that's a tough area, but I also hear a lot of anxiety that they want us to do things quickly.
It's both, isn't it? And we've heard from the fire chief that, Nick, tell me if I get it wrong, but, you know, that it's gonna be a couple of years before you see that mandatory thing go statewide, but should we act quicker? Those are good questions, you know. I totally agree with all that.
We're allowed to be more protective, and I'll just have Taylor confirm.
We gotta hear, we gotta hear from the fire chief, man. Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. So, I would say act quicker is important. 2028, we're hearing from the fire marshal, but there's no saying that Cal Fire would not push that forward to make it 2026. We're looking at leaning towards 2025 for some of those mandatory zero things, but again, the time is now to take advantage of the momentum that's going forward from experience in the past. In case we have a slow fire season, that momentum's lost because we didn't have anything within the area of Ojai. Does that kinda make sense? And when you look at our neighbors, two almost hundred thousand acre fires just twenty miles from here.
I think we're gonna be coming to people like you and other agencies to say, okay, we want your advice. What's the best first step that we can do? We know some of it, but we wanna articulate it and, you know, have a hierarchy.
I would say act now. I like the smart objective, you know, simple, measurable, attainable, realistic in time. Try to take the small bite of that elephant and see what you can accomplish now. Helping people out that can't afford it, and then maybe we get to that point where we're forcing some of those policies.
That's great. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to process.
Process.
Yes, and I think, since we have, since we've already done our voting process for items one through five and picked our top tier, I think it might make most sense to go through the remaining three, or four rather, and do that same process that we did. And then, we, when we do come back, we can come back with a consolidated list of our top tactics and goals. So, that's my goal. That's my suggestion.
And I'm hearing Mr. Whitman say you're gonna work on legal with them directly, right?
Yeah, and, and community development, yeah.
And staff will probably likely only monetize the prioritize items. We can come back, if you blow through all the prioritize items and you're getting ready to move into the others, that'd be a luxurious situation to be in, and we would do that. But I think, to make it expeditious, that's probably what we'll do.
Then let's, I like your idea. Let's go to number six.
Okay, can I give you guys some freebies on number six?
Freebies! Oh, man, make our voting easy!
Thought you might like this. So, this is the Diversifying Economy Tourism Management Goal. And again, you've already established this as a goal. You've created several tactics to go along with it. I'm gonna do something you probably wouldn't expect from me, but I'm gonna tell you that we're, by professional service agreement, and just because we felt the need to bring some things forward to you sooner than later, we're actually working on three of these things already.
Okay.
So, I just wanna point those out to you. So, 6A. You know that we've been talking about the trolley and, you know, the sequences. We're trying to reinstate, you know, the Sunday service. We're, you know, we got more drivers scheduled for interviews. We're getting so close. Once that's established, then we can, you know, move into trying to bring back the second line. So, that is in motion. You can, you can keep that in your tactics. I'm just telling you, I don't think you necessarily have to put that as a priority, because I am working with our transit team to do that. I know that's the direction that you're giving me. So, that's a freebie if you want it.
Yep.
The second one that comes to mind is 6C. We have a professional services agreement with the chamber, and I'm fairly certain that within the agreement that we sign with them, it does call for this two-on-two committee. So, there's a contractual obligation to do that, and so I will bring that to you at an agenda. So, I don't think, we'll keep that in the tactics, of course, but you don't have to prioritize that. Lastly, and councilmember Ruhl has been privy to this, and maybe a couple others. 6E, we have on the working agenda, you may have seen it, I think it's in September or October. Mr. Montgomery might be able to help me. We're looking to bring the broadband franchise agreement, a proposed broadband franchise agreement to you for consideration. There's a company that's working in the region, Moore Park, Simi Valley, another city I'm forgetting. So, they're staged here, and they would very much like to come to you, you know, to have you consider optional broadband throughout the town. So, we're doing that already. So, those are things, three, that you don't have to, you don't want to indicate as a priority, 'cause they're already moving. So, there you go.
Okay. Mayor and Mr. Harvey, we have that scheduled for the September 23 regular meeting.
The broadband.
As a concept review.
Yes, as a concept, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we do the same approach we did last time. We each remember if you want, you know, jumps and says, these are my top ones. Wanna do that?
Let's do the public comments at this point.
Okay.
Okay, no thanks for the reminder. Oh, you're good.
Just so we're all consistent, are we not going to include any of the three? Are we going to include the three?
I'm gonna say, just like the others, they'll stay in the list, 'cause you guys already threw them out there as tactics. But the others, like one through five, you saw that the highlighted ones are the prioritized. So, on this, just this one goal, goal number six, I'm just...
No, 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 I'm, are, are my fellow council members going to include 6A, 6C, and 6E in their list of...
I would hope you guys wouldn't, because you don't need to.
Okay.
Freebies.
Well, but it's not really a freebie. I mean, it's not really a freebie. It's a freebie for a vote, but, but okay. I just wanted to be consistent.
I'm gonna work on it regardless of whether or not you guys vote for it, because those are kind of in motion.
So, we have a tourism management plan that's a proposed portion of our general plan, and we have some consultants working on that. Is Walker on that?
His firm is.
Right, okay.
I think he may be involved in it, too.
And then, there's the firm from San Luis Obispo, Lisa Smart. Lisa Wise, okay.
Smart Wise.
Smart Wise. So, is that also in that category? We don't, we don't have to...
No, you don't, because that's already in motion.
It's already in motion?
Yes, yes. And Lucas has just been telling me, if I just stop giving him new things every week, he's gonna have more bandwidth to move the general plan forward. So, he, yes, there, that's a freebie also. I'd say yes. Sorry, you're right. You can put that in.
Does that count the economic development plan that we were talking about?
I'm gonna, give me one moment, I'm sorry.
With BDL, or the...
6D is not what we're talking about with the general plan update. That's different. That's not in your tactics, but it doesn't need to be, because you've already provided direction and spent the money to update the general plan and given direction on how you want it updated.
Right, 6D is...
6D is different.
Is, is working with a consultant to look at streams of revenue and, and look at economic diversification and helping us to strategize.
Right, it's looking at what you have here in Ojai, understanding, you know, what you don't want to morph into and how to potentially, you know, bring some additional vitality without destroying everything that you like about Ojai.
Right.
That's different. A general plan update is more like, these are the overarching things we're trying to do. These are the policies we wanna have. This is gonna be more like, okay, in the next eighteen months, if you did the following things, you know, you could see some increased vitality, you know, in your downtown, or whatever area you wanted to.
And part of their proposal also includes looking at economic diversification, like looking at attracting what kinds of businesses we could attract here.
What's logical, what's possible.
That wouldn't have an impact on, on increasing tourism.
Okay, so, but there's gonna be overlap, because...
There'll be a little bit.
One is talking about an action plan. The other is talking more about long-term management and policy.
They should be, they should be complementary, and that's probably one thing that we should, if we, if you guys did decide to commission an economic action plan, that would be part of the directive we would give the consultants. You need to work in harmony with the general plan update, so that you're not proposing something that's inconsistent with that.
And so, I'm, as, you know, as the council member who asked that we have that portion of the general plan, I'm really interested in beginning a dialogue with our consultants on, you know, what they're shaping up, 'cause I don't want it to go in a different, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping that we can, well, I'm interested in starting a dialogue with them. I know that's not quite our tactics thing.
And Maura is putting notes in her phone to get this in motion, she's aware of this, so that is fantastic. Thank you, Maura.
One, I have one more question about a tactic. I think this probably ends up falling under the Chamber of Commerce conversation, but, so maybe we don't have to talk about it, but we have had conversations around, you know, what would a incubator space be? Or what would rental space assistance be? These are all general conversations we've had around encouraging businesses that are here in town, that we wanna help them start. Now, I don't see that as another item, but I do see the chamber being really interested partners in that kinda thing, so maybe it's just with them.
It could be. You're right. That one is not specifically called out. That could be, could be part of the general plan element update. It could be part of the action plan, but it's, you might want, if you specifically want that to be worked on, we probably should flesh that out.
So, if we did have, let's just say hypothetically, a 6I, 'cause I've heard several of us bring up that notion to say, what could we do to help a business that is already here but needs some help?
So, can I propose a simple tactic that maybe addresses what you're trying to address? 'Cause I've been, I've been wanting this, and I just haven't had the bandwidth to get to it, which is to talk to Ventura, because they have a very successful incubator program.
It's that program.
And have, you know, have a report back to us, and I don't care if it's one of our council members who does it, or if it's a staff member, but what, what are they doing with respect to their incubator so that we can figure out maybe how to adapt from that or come up with our own?
I, that, that's exactly what I was thinking, but maybe it does make sense as a separate tactic just to say, that's then the work to do, and if we think there's enough interest in that to do it. 'Cause I agree, let's, let's do ask.
So, the tactic would be bring, bring, investigate, bring back, and then a report on the incubator program that's been adopted by Ventura.
Or even other cities, yeah.
Or, or other cities, too, yeah.
So, Mr. Montgomery, you wanna throw up the...
Or show us your screen, if you wanna add.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Let's add this. It sounds like I'm seeing head nods to add this as a tactic. Whether or not you prioritize it, that's a separate matter, but at least it'll be in the list.
Yeah, I think it's good.
We won't lose track of it.
Thank you. Yeah, great.
Let's see, how do we wanna word this?
Sometime, they're called incubator spaces or incubator investment, incubator business investment. However, we wanna, we know what we mean by it.
And I would wanna edit it, you know, investigate city of Ventura and other agencies. Specifically, I've heard that, you know, Ventura is one that we wanna look at.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, that's great. So, let's go to the public comment. Tom Maloney, Tanya Parker, and Bill Miley. Hello, sir.
Hi. Andy, Lisa loved being called Lisa Smart. I already texted her.
Nice.
I'm Tom Maloney. I'm the executive director of the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. I'm here to talk about the goal around climate mitigation. You know, you guys just spent a lot, you know, an hour talking about methods to reduce energy consumption and therefore greenhouse gas emissions, as councilmember Whitman pointed out. At OVLC, we see ourselves as a small little land trust. What are we gonna do about global climate budgets? While we also have a five-year vision statement to lead the valley's response to climate change. We've decided to lean into the adaptation and resilience elements of climate mitigation rather than carbon mitigation, and we do that through nature-based solutions. We believe that the city should really lean into that orientation towards climate mitigation. For us, that goes to acquisition. We have a acquisition plan and a model looking at north-facing slopes that will provide climate refuge in a hotter and drier world to the natural communities that we care about in our valley. We're also looking at river bottoms, acquiring as much land as we can. We just added forty-six acres on, at the confluence of the two Matilla Creeks forming the Ventura River. Restoration, we look to improve ecological function. Sometimes you think about the Starbucks approach. You have as many replicates of that ecological function as possible. So, just like you can, you know, walk across the street from one Starbucks to another. And the Ojai Meadows Preserve is perhaps one of the best examples of how investing in a place and restoring the habitat will mitigate what had been a flooding problem and provide ecosystem services and community benefits. It's these co-benefits that I, that we think provide the community with ways to mitigate the effects of our changing climate and improve our community character and address real-world present problems, such as the adjudication. By investing in habitat restoration, you can, you can help endangered species and help create lasting solutions for the adjudication. Community character already mentioned. When you drive the East End, you see piles of sawdust more than you see orange trees. So, really thinking about how does that affect our community character? What do we think about as people in the city? And then, Rewild Ojai, which you've heard about and you know about through our proposal to expand our nursery, that really has given, with the most inspiring part of that is that you get a sense of the agency people feel that they can make a difference in their own yards. And so, those are the types of things we encourage you to lean in on with climate mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
I have a quick question, Tom. You're talking about adjudication, you're talking about the Ventura River adjudication, what's going on?
Right, yeah, 'cause there are a lot of linkages.
I think I understood that. I'm not sure everybody listened.
Okay, yeah, I knew you would.
Well, the arundo removal would be a big portion of how much water's flowing down to the river.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. Hello.
Good evening.
Hi.
My comments are on the tactical side of climate resilience. First, I think we can all agree that we care about climate change, and we know that real solutions require global action. But the climate isn't waiting on international consensus. And yes, we need sweeping national policies, but those won't happen until more of us vote, not just with the ballot box, but with our dollars and our daily choices. As discussed before, the most impactful things we can do are our personal actions and individual choices, and these are not things the city can or likely wants to mandate. So, the question becomes, what can we do right here, right now? Ventura County is the fastest warming in the nation. Here in Ojai, we're already seeing the effects of drought, fire, and floods, and despite this lovely summer, hotter, longer seasons. This isn't theoretical, it's happening. We can't solve it alone, but as a community, we can prepare. It starts by investing in the people who are already doing the work here to make Ojai more resilient. You have nonprofits across this valley tackling this head-on. The Fire Safe Council is helping homeowners harden their properties and making important plans before the next fire. The crew is already doing fuel hazard reduction and growing their role. Ojai Trees is planting shade along the valley, give them guidance on the importance of native trees. The Green Coalition is stepping into a convening role, advocating for shared priorities. Help them grow to be your voice on policy, on dark skies, single-use plastics, and more. OVLC is protecting open space, restoring native habitat, and removing invasive species like arundo that fuel both fire and flood, but none of us can do it alone. As nonprofits, we raise millions in private, state, and federal dollars every year for our valley, and we stretch every penny, but without operating support, even these best-laid plans can fall short. Your investment will be leveraged by these dollars. That's where the city comes in. With Measure C, voters gave you a mandate and the means to invest in climate resilience. The revenue is specifically intended for capital improvement, maintenance projects, fire mitigation, code enforcement, and climate change mitigation. So, yes, fund the infrastructure, it's important, but also fund the community and infrastructure, the people doing the work. Measure C comes from tourism dollars, and why do people come to Ojai? For the same reasons that we all live here. It's beauty, rural character, and access to nature. OVLC protects and provides these things, and to my knowledge, we've never received direct city support for that work. Other nonprofits have. This is not a complaint, but it's an invitation to reconsider. Right now, OVLC manages five times more land free for public access than the city and county combined. We provide seven, twenty-seven miles of trail. We're restoring riparian corridors that act as fire breaks and flood buffers. We're growing native plants that stabilize our banks, conserve water, sequester carbon, and rebuild biodiversity. As a city, you're not alone. You don't have to do all the work, but you do have to support those who are. Climate change is here, and your choices through funding, partnership, and leadership will shape how ready Ojai is to meet it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Bill Miley, and then Larry Stengel. Hello.
Hi. Item number six, diversifying the economy.
Diversifying the economy and tourism management. Please consider developing an ongoing survey of tourists with their needs, their wants, their demographics, their expectations. And their suggestion. Do it with the chamber, tourist vendors. And then use the information to adjust and fine tune tourists, economy goals and tactics. Seven, climate resiliency. Consider creating a low or no cost program for house and building owners. To have an energy audit done to determine energy saving improvements relative to the flex path thing. SEC does that. It will also provide motivation for such improvement. It's important to know homeowners exactly what exists before deciding what to add, remove and to change. And consider implementing the Sierra Collective, whatever their name was. Their plan to build catch basins, bio basins within the city's geography to collect and percolate rainwater. And number nine, communication and relationships. Consider crafting an annual report to the public on Ojai City Government. It would, could be added to the proposed financial annual report that's already being discussed. It will increase the resident, the citizens, resident citizens, understanding of what the city government does. How it does it. And where the money goes and where it comes from. And then last plea. Modify the tactic to take minutes of closed meetings to audio recording of closed meeting. Minute taking is very subjective, not complete enough for the future review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Larry Stengel.
Larry Stengel. Please record the closed meetings. The reason we're all here is because it's not Altadena, Pacific Palisades, parts of Camarillo, parts of Upper Ojai, parts of Sulphur Mountain. Parts of anywhere else in the state or in the country that are burned. If we could just move fire to the forefront. And just concentrate on that, everything else will take care of itself. Because once we, I just spend thousands anyway, cut down trees and do the front yard and do zero or as close to as I can. Yeah, I mean, I like Ojai, I don't want to leave. Right, it just, you know, mandate a few things, make it to forefront, kick it to the top of the list, but concentrate on that. Climate will, will work that too. And we also have to need economic development, because without money, this isn't going to happen. So we control our expenses, we generate more income and we get to live here. So that's the job. That's your mission, that's my mission. Because I like it here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stengel. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Mayor, we have no raised hands and we have two participants on Zoom. Give you just a moment to raise your hand here if you'd like to comment on item two. And nothing raised, mayor, we'll move on.
Thank you. All right, so is our, at least I'm trying to remember how we've done this before, is we looked at each one of these and then we voted on our top three?
Somebody has to jump, somebody has to throw out their three and.
Well, we, we, we look at them carefully.
We took a few minutes.
We took a few minutes and then we did our voting.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I think we, we rotated so that everybody had a turn going first.
That's right, that's it.
I just have one quick question with six A with the trolley. Can we, I know you mentioned it, but to make sure the Sunday route, that's so important to so many people.
You could certainly change that, you could, you could modify that tactic to say something like, you know. Work to restore Sunday service and procure adequate resources to successfully reinstate second trolley route.
That's something that I would like, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I know it's a big deal.
We'll have that be, you vote on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, but I like that.
I would tell you, this is a freebie. And this is something we're already doing. And so if there, if there are enough head nods, that's no problem to modify that tactic, because that's something we're working on.
I do like that.
Yeah, I would just at the, where it says route, at the end of the sentence, I'd just say, and restore Sunday service.
Just on that, it seems to me, when especially, like if we look at the traffic piece, for example. We've already talked about having a safety and tra, like when it says commission a parking study, that's six F. We've already talked about the possibility of a safety and traffic, you know, commission. And then the trolley, whatever our tra, our parking and traffic plan is going to be, the trolley is integral and it's, it's completely a part of it. So I do like restoring the Sunday service makes a lot of sense, which you already knew that. That that was a goal after. The B line, tell me if I'm wrong, the B line is, it's the same route, but every half hour, not every hour.
The line goes to Ojai Valley Inn.
The B line goes to the Ojai Valley.
A little bit different.
Oh, it's, okay, thank you.
But I, what I've told our supervisor and our team, you know, we're, we need to successfully have Sunday service before we can start talking about an additional route.
Fair enough, oh yeah, agreed.
And, and there may be a, a cost impact, which you have adequate transit funding for to do that. But just, we would, we would want to, when we're ready, we'll definitely come back to you on that, because that'll be a big deal. We'll come back to you once Sunday services.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're close.
Thanks for, that's, thanks for that emphasis, though, that's wonderful, okay.
Mayor, just to be clear, I did add and restore Sunday service to six A.
I see it, thank you very much. Okay. We're picking three. Okay.
And Weston, am I, are there some that? Yeah, you have, you have a few on the next page, right?
Correct.
So is there any way we can move that? Yeah, I guess not really, well, maybe go past the trolley one, there you go. Yeah, there he goes.
Give me that now.
That word doesn't, oh, there, well, now nobody, okay.
Worth a try.
No, that's, that's, that's good. Can you guys sort of see that? Sorry, not great, but.
Well, you took, the freebies were, were really hot ones, so this is pretty awesome.
Hey, we tried to value add here.
You did, yeah.
I don't remember what we said about six H.
H.
We talked about that being in the general, oh, oh, tourism plan was more about like signage and kiosks.
I would say we need to edit six H, thank you for bringing this up, because that's not very helpful to me when I'm working on this, I don't know what that means.
You know, it's funny, though, signage actually is part of the chambers agreement too, to say, how could we have signage that gets, that's off Ojai Avenue pointing? So this is where there is a lot of overlap in.
And I think the six H, there's overlap both with the chamber and also with the general plan consultancy too.
Yeah, so if, if I proposed this, and I'm not sure that I did. It would have been about the idea that we develop a, a message and message delivery system. The people who are visiting our community and that we try to, you know, either. Solicit their assistance and. You know, being environmentally conscious, you know, taking all their trash with them.
Okay.
And then throw five dollars into the donation bin.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, I think you did bring that up.
That's a, that's a campaign and what you, you see that type of thing in destination.
Yeah.
You know, um, management or DMOs, whatever that stands for, you know, Monterey County has, you know, sustainable tourism. Or, you know, be, be responsible, blah, 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 but that's like a marketing campaign. That's really what it is, because you're trying to put that message out in markets where, where people are coming from to get here. So that they see that, you know, on the way in. That might be a good. Yeah, I think you hit on it a little bit, that, you know, the chamber is going to be doing this three month trial coming back to you. That might be something you want to task them with. I don't, I don't know, I don't know that we're.
Right.
Very well poised to do that on the city staff side.
Just, and this is kind of, this is a little bit of a dream for a little bit farther out, not for the discussion exactly for today, but the. When we talked about in the arts, culture and recreation and we, to be discussed, we have this portion of money, this Ojai cultural contribution. Part of that vision is everybody who moves here gets this welcome basket and the chamber, you know, works with the realtors and the welcome basket has some goodies. But it has this thing, this website that people go to and it's, here's all the nonprofits in town. You like what you see here, it doesn't happen by itself, here's your chance to contribute. But it would, the hotels could have that too, to say, here's all these things that are in place for you to help out with what's here. So there might be some other ways to do, I love what you're saying, Mr. Whitman, and there's many ways maybe to get to.
But I think what, what differs a little bit from what you're saying with what he's saying, if I could just jump in, I mean, he's, he's trying. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you're trying to affect behavior coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, just like they're trying to do like in Monterey County and Big Sur, don't go to Big Sur.
And, you know, I, I could even see like making an appeal that. We're not going to be a small town if you guys don't help us.
That's interesting.
And it won't be a place for you to, you know, it won't be the great place for you to come to visit. You know, we need help. Maybe it's with.
Keep Ojai slow.
Yeah.
Well, maybe it's with, maybe it's a contribution to our affordable housing fund or our, our land trust.
I love it.
Something, and I'm not saying these are ideas that I really like, but we, maybe we could do something like that and see.
I mean, it could be in every hotel room in the city, right? Something that's produced that says, hey, let, yeah, just like what you just said, um, you like, you're here for a reason. Right, I love it.
Okay, so do I hear a desire to, to modify this tactic or, you know, so I don't forget what we talked about when it comes time to implement this?
Well, I, I think it's vague enough that we're capturing both what.
Yeah, all right.
What, uh, what the mayor said and what I said.
Yeah.
What, what I'm not remembering is what we pinned on six I. The new.
Ventura Incubator.
With incubator.
Ventura Incubator, okay.
Yep. All right. Whoever's ready, go for it. I'm happy to start, but I, anybody can start. Want to start? Okay.
Okay. My number one is. Six G. My number two is six D. And my number three is six I.
Ready.
Okay, I'm ready.
Go.
Number one is sixty. Number two is six G. No, number two is six I and number three is six.
Ready.
I'll go, my number one is six D. Number two, six G. Number three, six I. Okay, one moment. Good, nice. Let us know when you're ready, Weston.
Stand by.
What were the mayor pro temps again, I didn't write that down correctly.
Uh, six G, D and I.
D, thank you, all right, thank you.
Ready, mayor.
Ms. Bing?
Um, I will do number one is six D. Two is. Six I and three is G.
Great. That's very nice.
That's everybody.
That's wonderful.
Okay, so, uh, six D makes it in, six G makes it in and six I makes it in, right, that's it, simple, right?
Yep.
Weston's, I, okay.
All clear.
Those are, those are the prioritized ones, we're not removing any tactics.
Right.
Those are just the ones we're working on first.
All clear.
Aside from those that we already talked about, there are freebies that are already in motion.
Yep.
Okay. I think we're good to move on to.
Seven.
All seven.
Okay.
Want to do the same thing, Weston, and just move that. Oh, there, you did, sorry.
Yeah, no, thanks.
Apologize, you did that.
We are looking at A through J now, and let me know if you'd like to zoom in at all on the screen.
Okay.
Do we have any freebies?
Yeah, any freebies? Freebies would be great.
I didn't, I don't know if I saw any, but let me just take a look here.
Because we, we're already doing the six, seven C, correct?
Seven A, um, let me, okay, actually, this is a good opportunity, let me ask you a question here. We are actively replacing city vehicles with electric or zero emissions vehicles. We're doing that, we've been doing that for the entire time that I've been here and before I got here.
Yep.
Increasingly, it's harder to procure a purely electric vehicle in a timeline that's not out several months or even years. What's the council's appetite on plug in hybrids? Vehicles that could be driven around Ojai largely on electric power only, but if you did need to go to some other farther off location, there'd be a small gas engine that would accompany.
You're saying those are more available to purchase.
Those are more available to purchase, it just gives us a little flexibility, so, and it gives us some options, so I'll give you a good example. We're, we, trucks, we buy, that, that's what's aging out in our fleet and we're buying new trucks. Well, purely electric trucks, you're, you know, the Ford F-50 Lightning, that's something we buy, but it comes in a crew cab. We don't always need a four passenger truck. Just, it just, we don't, and then they're, they're not available right away. So I think if we, if we had that flexibility with the understanding that, you know, that you're driving this car on electric mode when you're at work, unless you absolutely, you run out of charge and then it converts over. I is, I just, I thought of this because I, I drive a plug in hybrid Jeep around town and for my purposes, just driving around town, it goes about twenty miles. Most days, I'm just driving on purely electric power.
You recharge it every.
Every night, which we could do too.
Then we would have to have recharging stations.
Well, and, and so that's part of what we're also doing, you know, you've got this electrification effort that we're doing through all facilities and we're adding infrastructure, because we have to. The fleet is, you know, that's what we're buying, we're not buying gas vehicles.
How many more vehicles are you looking for?
Well, the mandate from the council is every, every time a vehicle ages out, it needs to be replaced with an electric vehicle. So all of our vehicles and probably half of our vehicles, at least I would say, if not more, are still gas powered.
What's that number?
Are we saying ten?
Oh, my gosh, we have a lot of vehicles, we probably have, I'm going to spitball here, Lindy would be better to answer this. And actually, is Lindy online, can I? She's not online, okay. I'm going to say we have at least thirty vehicles. Because we also have some specialty vehicles.
Thirty total or thirty to go?
Thirty total.
Okay.
We've probably replaced ten.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just spitballing roughly, you know, you got twenty or so that you're gonna.
So, so what's the timeframe needed to get the electric vehicles?
It varies, like I, we, you know, well, okay, I'll give you two examples. We have a trolley we ordered last year, that's going to come in, I think now twenty seven.
Right.
We, you know, we have an F Ford, we have an F one fifty Lightning, what did Lindy say today? Six months, something like that?
I'm hearing you ask for a little flexibility to say, if you need to replace a vehicle and the electric's not available, how do we feel about a hybrid?
Plug, only a plug in hybrid.
A plug in hybrid.
Not a, not a old timey hybrid, you know, just plug in hybrid with the caveat that when you're driving it in town, you're driving it. To, to councilor Whitman's point, you're charging it up at night, so it's got a full electric charge, that's how you drive it. And then if you run out of that charge, then yeah, it does kick over.
And, and, and why don't we do that with the idea that it's. It's a car that's assigned to local driving as opposed to long distance trips.
Which almost, you know, all of our vehicles are only, you know, the only vehicles that do long distance are like a pool car. You know, for a regional meeting every now and then, but almost all of our cars stay in Ojai ninety five percent of the time.
You understand what our intention is.
Yep.
I would love to give you that flexibility.
Okay, great.
Did anybody object? Okay.
So maybe if just to, to capture it, Weston, if you could put, you know, something about, you know. Plug in, plug in hybrid allowed when, you know, electric or zero emissions not possible.
Thanks for asking that.
Thank you.
Any other freebies? Any other freebies?
Uh, we're, we're already doing, we're, seven B.
Runs, okay.
We're doing that, we've got money in the budget and we've been doing that, so that's kind of a, we're, seven C is complete.
Seven D is already planned for?
Seven D is already planned for, yeah.
When we bring that ordinance back, Lucas and I have already talked about what the education plan is and roll out, so that will be a part of it.
Seven F is also in the general plan update. I mean, where's more, more I'm remembering that correctly, that's part of our, that's, that's one of our, that's encapsulated in an element from what I require, recall.
Seven F, you mean?
I'm sorry, seven F, seven F.
Yep.
Yep, okay, so that's a freebie.
And, you know, there's a freebie that's not on this list.
Is that right?
But it's the, I think the Flex Path.
Yeah, you could, you, yeah, throw that on there.
I mean, it.
Throw that on there.
We don't need to prioritize it cause it's down the road.
You should put it on there because we're expending resources on it, so, yeah, Weston, please add that, thank you.
So that, um, this might have been identified in another one of our goals, but, um, you know, it came up tonight in public comment, and I think we need to have an understanding of Measure C and a policy about how we're gonna allocate Measure C money because it's gonna drive some of these other things.
That's kind of a little bit of a freebie too, cause we are also.
We're working on that already.
That's, you're gonna see at your next meeting on the fire issue, there's gonna be an attachment on the fire item, that's a spreadsheet of, you know, the money that's been brought in for Measure C and what has been spent on, the various categories since its inception, but having a tactic like you're talking about is great because then we can, that, that's part of our desire is, you know, we, we want some more, you know, terms overused, but transparent.
Measure C is not a perfect model of saying exactly where the money we collect is gonna go. I'm being facetious.
Yeah, yeah, but the good news is, um, in the spreadsheet will show it, it's, you know, the money has been used in the areas that the voters said, this is what you should use it for, and we have.
Right.
But, you know.
But then allocating it out.
In the August twelfth meeting, Norma sent the report today, actually, the Measure C summary.
Yeah.
I should read those things.
It's scheduled for August twelfth.
But, but that's a week from now.
Right.
But I, I like having a tactic to, to kind of, because it should ultimately, I love it, having a policy and the policy should go through the budget and Finance Committee, that's kind of what we're, we were thinking about doing first, and it could come to you. So that'd be great.
Okay, so I've got one more that's a potential.
Is there, is there anyone that opposes the tactic like that, knowing that it's kind of sort of in motion already?
That sounds good.
So, Mr. Montgomery, can we add that, and let's call that, um, you want to just call it Measure C, City Council Measure C Policy or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we also look at adding, to, to the point, look at adding, uh, Habitat Restoration as well?
Yeah, so I was, so I was gonna add, um, something, so most, based upon that, you know, public comment, and, and I've been talking to a lot of people, you know, about this in connection with preparing, being prepared for fire. So most of the restoration doesn't exist in city boundaries. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't necessarily be, you know, approaching it, and one of the things that I learned over the last couple of weeks is that the federal government has a program for, um, for, uh, like native species restoration in those areas that are impacting, where their forest land or parkland is impacting residential areas. And, um, and they potentially have funding and projects that you can push forward. That, that's my, that's a very vague understanding and it's completely secondhand uh, from, you know, somebody else is the one who's, I didn't read it somewhere, and Tom, you're putting a thumb up, this. Okay, well, I mean, my thought for a tactic is, let's at least find out, uh, what, particularly can the, you know, can the national forest assist us with, um, restoration of their land where it's critically impacting our?
The only editorial comment I have in that area is that increasingly, you know, the national forest is being seen as a harvest source, right? That's really kind of the focus this administration is, federal administration is taking, so I, I don't have a lot of faith in maybe programs that were in existence, maybe, it's a real, it's a real, it's a real push that they're,
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're, they're saying, you know, log now, that's really kind of what we're seeing.
Right, but if we're talking about like the area above Shelf Road and, um, you know, potentially re, reforesting so that it's.
Well, that's very, that's very specific, and I, that's, that's, I like something.
So the boundaries, you know, so most of our very high severe fire risk residential areas are bordered by these areas that are potentially national forest.
The interface.
So, um, maybe that's a complete deviation from what you were talking about, Councilmember Lang. But, um, that's, when you were saying that, I was already planning to at least do some investigation, uh.
That whole space that you're talking about is so interesting because the, the goats go in that space, we could reforest that space, like you're saying, um, it's the interface where the fire came to the, the orchards, we all know that, we saw it.
Right.
It's a critical zone.
I mean, I know that, um, Santa Barbara Botanic Garden and UCSB have been doing a, a big, you know, study program about, um, restoring the, the natural oak forest, you know, where it, as a fire mitigation measure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds a little bit like, you know, the Rewild Program.
Right.
Yeah.
It's clearing, it's like the goat clearing where it makes sense and then reforesting where it makes sense, yeah, with natives.
Should we just, should we add as a tactic, uh, rewil, rewilding or like?
Well, you, you, you know, so, yeah, you could, you could, that's something, there's some.
I'm all for it. Habitat Restoration and Rewilding.
But if you wanted to be more specific, you could say at the interface, if, if you wanted to point it to a zone.
Well, I think that's to, to make it, that makes it the most relevant to our homeowners. So in other words, if, if, if you're living in those, uh, you know, those zones that are most acutely impacted, doing something, uh, to get, improve the vegetation in the bordering, you know, forest land is a great benefit to those residents. It's also a great benefit to the idea of, you know, potentially slowing that wind-driven fire.
I totally agree. Do, do you want to expand that such that you could have a program where homeowners are incentivized to rewild their own properties in town, they, they could take advantage, you know, you could, you could create a modest fund where they get native plants for free and if they remove, you know, that they go all native, you know, that there's an incentive to do that?
We'd have to look at what that would.
It's many pieces, there's many things in that one aspect, it seems to me, but, um, some of it is not in privately owned land that we would be interested in working with these folks on, um, some of it is. But the Shelf Road's an easy example, cause it's easy to see it, um.
I think that we need some action words though for
We do.
The last three, to just be clear, when we walk away from this space of, of what the action that we're taking related to these subjects.
So make, so let's take a step back, so that's, can't read that.
Habitat Restoration and quote-unquote Rewilding is seven M.
And, okay, so, so my, my thought on an action plan on that was, was to, to investigate the programs that are available and have funding and, you know, pursue those with those agencies or organizations that.
Okay.
And, and maybe, you know, and then in the process of that, we potentially, as you said, get, get, right, and, and we potentially get feedback on, okay, there, there isn't money here, but there's potentially some benefit to using community.
Here's a question, so, or, I mean, would another way, another possibility, and I'm just bringing this up, so another possibility would be like entering into a contract with the Land Conservancy.
I couldn't mean that.
Um, and, you know, and as part of that contract, there could be a grant. I don't know what.
I agree, I think what, what I've heard though, you, you've given the entree to bring something forward to the council to consider with the Land Conservancy or with somebody else, or, you know, but that way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm really kind of.
To be made.
I'm really kind of interested in, in kind of a triangular thing where we've got a government representative for whoever's responsible for those lands to participate.
Well, Marshall, who's, he's, Marshall's our ranger, he wouldn't have the authority, but he could at least tell us what kind of flexibility there is where the Los Padres start.
And what, and what programs they might have and.
But you're right too, he, he's wait, he's waiting for the news.
Well.
So we'll find out.
Yeah, it's a good.
Can I cut in here for just a second? I, I'm seeing the lines blurred between wildfire safety, risk mitigation, and over the last two weeks, we've basically torn apart and cobbled back this and that, and I think, uh, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Lang and I talked about really having to sit down and have a full-fledged discussion on what fire mitigation, fire hardening, wildfire safety, risk mitigation, what all of that means. It seems to me we're branching off and I'm losing the center, I, I don't know where we stand right now with all of this. We're going to be thinking about a budget line item.
Well, let me, let me just jump in really quick, because you already, you gave direction at the last meeting. You gave direction and we're, and we're on the working agenda for the twelfth, we have an item to come back to you with a revised OB, Ojai Valley Fire Safety Council proposal.
Right.
With a, uh, fire, you know, concept for a fire budget, and so that's why the Measure C item is coming. And then, uh, there's a desire for a fuel reduction RFP, and we're gonna give you kind of the step, the steps that are involved if you want to embark upon that, so that's already, that's coming to you on the next meeting.
Right, right, I understand that, but that's not even a, a quarter of what we've discussed, it's not even probably a tenth of what we've discussed, and.
It's only a beginning.
It's only a beginning, but we seem to be expanding out, and I, I don't think that any of these are bad ideas, but I'm just wondering how do we pull it back, center it, make decisions on it, figure it out? Because we have revisited this numerous, numerous, numerous times, and honestly, I just see it expanding out, and I don't, I'm not being, I don't see a pathway to resolution or figuring it out here.
I might suggest for the purposes of right now, you're on, you know, the climate resiliency goal. So any tactics that you propose, there might be kind of like your Flex Path, there might be a side benefit for fire hardening, but these all should have some type of, these all should cause the goal to be realized. So if you have things in there that don't cause the goal to be realized, you could, you could remove them.
Or, and they presumably won't get the votes.
Well, I mean, what, we just, everything we just talked about was wildfire safety.
But it was also restor, it was.
I understand where it sits.
It's, it's restoration of habitat.
Yeah, I would argue that, so you got Flex Path, you have the, you know, the Measure C policy, and then the last one's a little muddy, but, um, well, can you read that for me, please?
It's an interesting idea.
Seven M, Habitat Restoration and Rewilding, investigate programs and funding available for council consideration.
You know, I think those are all, I think those are climate resiliency-related tactics, I mean.
They are, they are, but they're also fire.
No, of course they are.
About stopping fire.
But that's, that's the glorious part about some of these goals, right, is they actually span several subjects.
No, I, I understand that, I'm, I'm just not seeing. I'm not seeing how this comes together.
These are council decisions, I mean, if you guys want to winnow this down, these are your, your goals, your tactics, so that's your call.
Aren't we gonna winnow it down when we do our three votes right now?
Yeah.
You're gonna prioritize, yeah, and.
And I just, so we're including Flex Path on seven K, but we're saying that's a freebie.
Yes, because you, you basically.
We just talked about it.
Yeah.
And I, I have a question, whether, there was one here that was an education. Oh, seven H. I guess that's, that's separate.
It's a little bit expanded from.
It's a diff, it's a similar but different goal.
You'd have to create a grant program for that one. Versus a mandate, which is where Flex Path is going.
I, can I, if I, if we're ready, I just want to ask one question about seven F. We said, complete the Climate Action Plan and Consider the Intersectionality of Housing Traffic Climate Mitigation, Economic Diversification, and we said, it's a freebie because it's in process. Do we have any, it seems to me this is so central to so much of what we're talking about. What's, when are we gonna have that conversation?
So, this is kind of what I was alluding to, this is where Lucas told me if I could just leave him alone for a little while, he could give us a general plan update.
Alright.
So that, that's on our radar, and so Weston, maybe on the working agenda, if you could just put a note that in, I'm gonna say September, we'll, we'll give you a general plan update.
Got it.
General plan update, update.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Because, um, I, I think a lot of the conversations a lot of us have had with each other and with our communities is, even tonight, when we say, when someone pointed out, let's say, climate, the climate mitigation that's occurring with the Flex is, it's, it's a tiny piece of a larger conversation that we would be talking about, parking, traffic, you know, building materials, jobs. It's just, it's gigantic, right, that would be a whole workshop by itself. Okay. So we'll get an update on the update, love it.
Yeah, we put that on the work, okay, Weston's nodding his head.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Maura's here.
So, we're getting, we're getting close to nine, so my suggestion is let's vote. Okay.
And just, just for, just to reiterate, the freebies are seven A, B, C, D, F and K and L.
Yeah.
The.
K is Flex Path.
And.
L is Measure C, which is coming.
Okay, great, thank you.
Agreed.
This is good though, we're making progress.
You're seeing why Lucas is saying leave me alone for a little bit.
No, it would be a really fun project though to work on it, okay. Alright.
So, uh, seven G is alternatives to like stick frame construction?
I think it would be like the earth and materials and things like that was that proposal. That we would extend what's administrative, for example.
Well, and you're gonna have a real-life, uh,
Yeah, with the kind of village.
Project coming forward, so it's gonna have some of those in it.
Right.
And what, what did we assign to that tactic of addressing rewilding, uh, rehabilitation?
Want to have it read over, let's read that again, that's seven M, Mr. Montgomery, could you read that one more time?
Yeah, seven M.
Habitat Restoration and Rewilding, investigate programs and funding available for council consideration.
Who wants to jump?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was given.
We like freebie.
Would, would, uh.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, alright, so, one is seven H. Two is seven M. And three is seven E.
Ready.
I'll go, um, seven E. Seven G. So alternative road paving, alternative building, and then seven M Habitat Restoration.
Okay, I'll go, uh, seven M. Seven H. And seven I.
Ready.
I'll do, um, seven M is one. Seven E is two. And seven H is three.
Ready.
Yep.
Ms. Rowan?
All right, um, seven G is one, uh, seven M is two. And, I'm trying to differentiate if you guys can help me. So investigate options, seven G is basically within the code, investigate options, both kinds of building materials, allowing a code, uh, facilitation.
I think so.
And, seven H is educate buildings. I'm wondering if there's a way to combine those, to keep the field same thing.
Seven H is a grant program. So, so you educate them on energy-efficient things, and then it's an incentive program instead of a mandate. For, and it would expand, it's different, right, it's new construction and existing home.
So it's larger than the Flex Path.
Councilmember Rule, microphone?
Thank you.
So, um, excuse me, so seven G is one, seven M is two, and I'm gonna go seven G. And that was my one.
Yeah.
I'm just out of it. Seven G is one, seven M is two. Well, okay, then I'm gonna say seven H is three.
Okay.
Okay, so I think
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, nope. Oh, hold on, hold on.
My bad.
Okay.
No, no, whatever.
Um, seven G is one, seven M is two, and seven J is three.
Okay. Okay.
So I think
That puts us
Yeah, go ahead, Weston, seven M.
Has five votes.
Right, seven.
And both seven E and seven H both have three.
Okay, so I think that, that, those are our priority items.
Okay.
And you're just about at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
All right, we have time, we can run through.
What do you mean?
Fast vote, no.
I think, I think
You mean, you wanna do the next two?
I think your colleagues are saying uncle for tonight.
We're done.
This is good, this is good.
But you, but you did two goals, so we just have two left. It won't be, you know, unless you want to have a long meeting.
We've got a lot on the next couple of agendas.
It can be, we can finish in September, or we can have a long meeting.
September, it's okay. But I mean, these, these are, we're not, so much has been proceeding as we go.
Here's the thought, what we could do is maybe we could, not maybe, we, when we come back in September, we could monetize everything.
That you have so far.
Yeah, exactly, here's what you did, here's, here's the impact.
Thank you.
Here's the budget amendments that are gonna be required.
That would be great.
Yeah, we can do that, so Weston, if you could make sure that we're
Thank you.
Being honest on that. Sound reasonable?
That's good. Yes? We good?
Yep.
Done.
All right, meeting adjourned.